Call the 2021 budget presentation to order. Commissioner Banks will say the prayer and the pledge, please.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and we thank you that you've given us the responsibility to oversee the fiscal needs of this city. We just ask for wisdom tonight, Lord. We ask that you would give clarity to those that are presenting so we can get the big picture and make the right decision. You said in your word, if we ask for wisdom, you give it liberally. So we thank you, Father God. We thank you for a blessed city and we ask you to bless this night in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Chief Wylem, you ready to go?
Sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, Mr. Bass, members of the public. Here to present the 2021-2022 budget for the fire department for this year. First, just go over some of our stats that we wanted to share with you that we've been working on throughout the year and move forward in there. Our vision statement, of course, is to provide the best all hazards, all risk emergency response within the community and establish standard of care for the citizens, visitors, and stakeholders. My mission statement's a little lengthier, but goes into, basically, we exist to care for, protect, and to serve our community. So something we hold very dearly. Last year, you can see our call volume, actually in 2020, went down a little bit. That was pretty typical for the COVID year. The nationwide average actually dropped about 20%. We saw about an 8% reduction in call volume, but as you can see, based on each one, and it's pretty hard to see there, but it's kind of breakdown per station. Station one's still leading on top. All the way down to station six, which is...
Can I just interrupt you for a moment? This presentation, do we have it here? Is it here? Because I can hardly see it here.
Okay. I can certainly get you a copy if...
Well, isn't the purpose of us having the same presentation?
This is... Okay. We'll get you a copy.
Okay. I guess you're gonna have to go ahead, but in the future, if they're presenting something, can you please make a copy for us?
Yeah, we'll have the departments...
Because I can hardly see this.
Yes, we'll have the departments make a copy of their PowerPoints and give you those as well during this, during the presentations.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Velazquez, this point, can we have a pre-read? Not during, just can we get all of them prior to the start?
I think there's a couple departments that are still working on it, but what we can do is, well, as soon as, as they complete them, we'll have them give them to you. So tomorrow, we'll have public work should be, they're still dialing up some of theirs, but we'll have them give them out to you before, as soon as they're done with them.
Hey, Chief McKinley, do you want to go ahead and, can you get somebody to print your PowerPoints while... What's that?
Oh, awesome. I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
That would be good.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Rob.
We're good. Okay. So again, the next slide just shows the breakdown as far as percentages per station. Basically, station one is running 8.04 calls per shift, station two, 3.8, station three, 3.4, station four, 3.01, station five, 3.04, and station six, 0.77. That's calls per shift. That is including fire and EMS calls throughout the year of 2020. And you can see here, based on our trend for this year...
And a shift, a shift is how long?
24 hours.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Our trend so far this year, 4,500 calls in about six months. So we're trending, again, to back, go back to about where we normally should be for our normal growth rates, about 9,000 calls a year. Effective January 1st of 2021, thing we wanted to implement as well is begin reporting all of our incidents to National Fire Incident Reporting System. Before, we were actually reporting all of our fire calls, but our EMS calls were not going directly to that system. This is the actual report from last year that is put out by the state of Florida each year to show the 2019 EMS, fire and EMS counts. And you can see down here, highlighted in yellow, last year, we were ranked 154th in the state. Something I, we knew was not correct. You know, we knew we were running more than the 819 EMS calls it was showing. So we want to make sure that we, we made sure that was correct. In 2019, we were 53rd overall in fire calls. So that's something that was reported correctly, so. With our update this year and reporting correctly, you can see that our call volume has gone up to now number 57th in the state, almost 100, you know, ranking change as far as EMS. We're still working on making sure that all 100% of our reports are getting reported to that system. What's important about this is it helps us with grants. It helps us with our trends, our tracking, things like that. And you can see even our fire calls have gone, we went down a little bit in rank, but that's, that just ebbs and flows as far as, as normal operations, so. Again, this is the 2020 year. Fun fact, again, our busiest days, still Wednesdays, it's kind of interesting fact there, our busiest times of the day, between nine o'clock in the morning and about eight o'clock at night. You can see some of the trends there. Again, ISO and AHA guidelines are still our, are what we're aiming to get. First two arriving apparatus established, ISO's standard is 5.5 minutes to 90% of confirmed working fires. ISO measures just that, confirmed working fires. Second apparatus, within 9.5 minutes, 90% of the time. And again, just as important, AHA guidelines. We want to make sure that we're getting to our patients within that four to six minute timeframe and help save lives, save brain, save heart, save, save all the stuff that EMS deals with. So what is response time? That's something, a lot of times, is a question that's asked. Basically, response time for fire department is turnout time versus travel time. So turnout time is the time that the tones go off at the station or we're alerted, the actual time we go responding in the truck. So a lot of times, that's, that's measured as well. Our average turnout time for the pop fire department last year was one minute and 15 seconds. So the time the tones get off to the time they're actually exiting, responding, going through the call is a minute and 15 seconds. Our average response time, fire and EMS, is four minutes and 52 seconds. So our overall response time is four minutes and 52 seconds. This is our current response area, station one through six, as well as our county contract area. These next few maps you're gonna see here, I got with Mike Zubor with Public Services, I wanted to really look at how we are responding, where we're responding to our timeframes, where we're at as far as the overall picture. So these next couple of slides you're gonna see are each station at 2:00 AM and each station at 5:00 PM. 5:00 PM being the heaviest time for traffic travel. The, pretty much the algorithm or the system we put this into also puts in a 35 mile an hour response time, which is what ISO states is the average response time.
You can sync the lights now. Wait a minute. Bob, it, will it be separate or will it be included in the... Oh, I'll see three separate PowerPoints. I don't know. Did you see it?
Mine.
Which? Which one is that?
It's gonna be the fire right here.
This one?
Yep.
Okay. And scroll up?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Okay, so this makes it easier for me to see.
So again, the first, first few maps are, for each station, you can see 2:00 AM, which is our, you know, what we assume is gonna be the easiest time to travel along the road. Your next time you're gonna see is 5:00 PM. So each map is gonna actually break that down per station. So as you see here, this is station one. Again, the GIS mapping kind of hopefully predicts that at 2:00 AM, we're gonna be able to reach anywhere in the green area in zero to four minutes. Anywhere in the yellow area in four to six minutes, anywhere in red in six to eight minutes. As you can see, when we adjust for the traffic flow, that actually shrinks down because we can get out, we can get less further out with our response times and things like that. So this is some, a tool that we like to use to track their station two, 2:00 AM, station two at 5:00 PM, station three, 2:00 AM.
So how do I interpret this, though, on the response times for 5:00 PM? For example, Aral Estate is completely free of any coloration. Does that, does that indicate that there's no calls in Aral at that time?
No, no, no. Again, this is just a mapping of our response. So we're taking an apparatus from station three in this scenario and seeing, based on geographical and an average 35 mile an hour speed, how far we can get within that area.
Oh, so we should know, okay, so the colored area would be the boundary that station three, the station three service area?
Not necessarily even the service area, but if they had to, let's say, respond to Aral, you know, is that somewhere that station three's gonna reach? And so if you look at it...
So this should tell me that if they had to respond from station three at 5:00 in the afternoon, they would be well over the eight-minute response time?
Well over, yes. Which mean, you know, they're not necessarily second due to that area either. So again, just how we are looking at all of our station responses, making sure that we're covering our entire city as best as, as best as we can. So and then station, again, station three at 5:00 PM, station four at 2:00 AM, and you're gonna see, like I said, a lot of that, the response time is gonna shrink down because we can get less further out with the, with that traffic travel. Station five, again, at 2:00 AM.
Where's station five?
Station five. It's up here. If you, Commissioner?
What happened?
If you look right here, it's the...
Yeah, it's not in our packet.
It's not in our packet.
Okay.
Late add. But I guess at the end of the day, for a graphic like this, what, what are we trying to say? Are we, for the areas that our stations are covering, both at three, or 2:00 AM and 5:00 PM, are we within the area that we feel comfortable or is there concern? What are we, what are we saying on these?
Well, and the big thing we want to show you with station six coming up is, you know, the need for the move and also the, you know, the road extension, Harman Road extension, how it's gonna benefit us. But when we're looking at these, even, you know, station five sitting here, there's not a lot of green, you know? Is there a certain places, you know, when we look at, where we're studying to put a station, we want to make sure that we're putting it in the most adequate spot. Are we gonna be able to travel to these places? And when you look at station one, for instance, a lot of green, a lot of coverage area, and then reduce this down, again, that's just the estimate we're trying to reach, okay? What can we do? What can we change, add, subtract?
So, I mean, I'm looking at this, but I don't know what your response is for fire, for EMS, and where exactly, I know that different stations, different firehouses have different trucks that are stationed in there, so like, you're not really, I mean, you're, you're telling me station three, which is, if you have an EMS call, is the fire truck and EMS truck coming out of there or is it coming out of five or is it coming out of one? Because I know that there's different trucks in, in different station houses. So I don't, I don't understand what this is trying to tell me.
This, these response areas or response are just basically solely based on time. Whatever apparatus is coming out, we want to see where we can travel to, where we can't travel to, and if we need to make adjustments. So it doesn't really have to do with specific apparatus, again, it's just our response times.
Okay. But does it differ between fire and EMS?
It can. This, this again, just replicates what ISO gives us is 35 miles an hour. You can take a pickup truck, an ambulance or a fire truck, it's still gonna replicate 35 miles an hour.
Okay. All right.
Again, station four, station five, some differences. Station six, you can see, which is located in the southwest area there at 2:00 AM and also at 5:00 PM, in its current location on City Hospital property. One thing we wanted to look at when we're looking to put the permanent station is where's it gonna go? Where can we get our best bang for our buck, pretty much? And by adding in, Mr. Zubor was able to add in actually the Harman Road extension to part of the algorithm that goes through as well. And by adding in the move from where it currently is to across the street and that Harman Road extension, we've exponentially increased our green area for station six. So I guess all this was kind of to show you that there's a reason, there's a method to the madness. We want to look at some of this data. We want to look at some of these statistics and see where our travel times are, where we can get our apparatus to where they need to be most of the time in the most quickest way, manner possible. We are still in ISO one, it's number one of 43 in the state of Florida, also one of 411 in the, in the United States, which still puts us in the top 0.8% of the country. Again, I presented this last year, this is something else, last year at NFPA, every five years, they put out a study based on some of the data and research they've done throughout, throughout the years and some of this stuff here. So when we look at the last five years, when talking about career fire departments, rate of fire, firefighters per thousand in population, last five-year average was 1.704 firefighters per thousand. We also look at, there's a couple, you know, there's a bunch of different statistics it gives us, but in our population range, 50 to, to almost 100,000, based on a 56-hour work week and kind of understand how that works, our firefighters work three, three shifts one week and then two shifts the following two weeks. So when you take those hours, 72, 48 hours, 48 hours, and the average was out, that gives us a 56-hour work week. So that's when you hear the term, it's based off of 56-hour work week. That gives us our metric to look at over there. The average firefighter per capita is one point, almost 1.4 for that size, and that ranges as far as that goes. Where are we currently sitting? Again, this is the most up-to-date information from our community development, population of 53,000, almost three and a half, 35 and a half square miles. Our population density is about 1,509, have a total of 107 personnel. This gives us right around 1.99 firefighters per thousand. Three, almost three firefighters per mile or one firefighter for every 501 in population. So this year, again, I called all the surrounding area chiefs and polled them to see about where we're at compared to the rest of the area. As you can see, Coey averaged about 1.41 per thousand, Winter Garden about 1.37, Maitland's 2.44, Winter Park 2.46, Orange County's 1.54, and Orlando's 1.96. When you look at some of this stuff, and it's interesting to see the size of these cities and, and the density populations of some of these cities and the differences in what we're looking at some of this. So even for instance, like Coey, a smaller community, I think, I think it's total 16, almost 17 square miles, whereas 34, 35 square miles. But their population's 48,000. Now, also, we want to remember that we also cover the Orange County area, you know, so when you add that in as well, we took the number when we first took over a couple of years ago, which is about 4,600 people in that area. Apply the same sort of logic we apply, which actually their number of people per resident or per household is actually lower than ours, but I just went ahead and applied our, you know, our, our rate to give us about 5,000 in growth in that area. So we have an additional 5,000. Again, when you add the area, that almost doubles, you saw that, that picture before, that doubles almost our, our response area. So our, our population density goes to go down. Again, our rates per citizens compared to all the other departments out there. I think the biggest thing here that I get from this is I want to maintain that close to two per thousand population, not just today, but moving forward in the future. And that's something, you know, I think that we aim to. ISO aside, all the other stuff aside, this is, you know, this is a good metric to kind of measure us by. Something else with this, again, based on the population, we have our total pumpers, they talk about other suppression vehicles, aerial apparatus, and stations per thousand in population. Can we look at all those, based on our, our population, we're supposed to have a little more than four stations. Right now, we have six also as far as apparatus. Our support apparatus, we're doing well too. The aerial, aerial apparatus, you know, it's kind of hint for the next couple of years, I do see a need for a second tower truck in the next three to five years, based on adding station seven and things like that. So it's definitely, things are coming down the pipe. But station-wise, we're certainly healthy. One of the things where we want to look at, when we look at some of our densities and things like that, is we're very unique. We cover a 35 square mile area with, with the population about the same size, it was to Coey, there's, there's three or 4,000 difference there, but it's spread out. It's very unique, you know? We have a lot of other municipalities, Maitland, for instance, is six square miles, but they have a lot of people in that very dense area. So it's kind of how we look at some of our modeling, things like that. Just go quickly over some of our revenue we talked about. Reasons why we're talking about this is we want to, we want to show that we're trying to do the best we can, do what we can to make, because we know, we know fire trucks are not cheap, you know, so personnel are not cheap, you know, there's things that we're gonna be asking for in the future. So last year, with the change healthcare, we did bill calls, five, a lower 5,000 bill calls, about $1.5 million.
So when, when you say bill calls, can you explain what that is?
Sure. So anytime we run a 911 call, EMS-related call, if they go out and it's something that the insurance companies or we're, it's a billable call, in other words, we transported, someone taken to hospital, if we get a refusal or anything like that, or if it's an assist or something like that, we don't technically bill those calls. It's also stuff that actually, what is allowed to be billed, in certain times where if, believe it or not, if paperwork's filled out incorrectly or things like that, it's a vetting process that the, that our billing company goes through, and this is our end result. So we're out of the 8,000 somewhat calls, we were able to bill for five, about 5,700, which is pretty good, you know, 80, 80/20 split with EMS calls as a whole, you know, we're sitting.
So that's separate from any care that you may give them inside the, and just tell me, what do you call your EMS truck?
The ambulance.
Oh, the ambulance.
Oh, yeah. Any, any care rendered, even if it's on scene or if we do transport, any, any of that care is considered billable, and it goes into different. So if it's a BLS patient, in other words, not so critical patient, that's where you see that those BLS numbers come from. So, so we had, out of that 5,000, we billed for 22, about 2,200 BLS calls.
Okay, so because we have people tuning in, so bill calls involves ALS, which is what? What does ALS...
Advanced Life Support.
What is it?
Advanced Life Support.
Advanced Life Support. Okay, because it, you have a lot of acronyms, and so...
Sure.
BLS.
Basic Life Support.
Does that get billed differently or do you have a, a schedule of how you bill?
Yes, ma'am. Last year, we actually, it was brought to council and they approved the different billable thresholds and all, what, what counts for what. There's BLS, there's ALS 1, ALS 2, depending on the severity. So there's actually different thresholds or different, for instance, we start an IV, that's considered ALS 1. If we push drugs, that's considered ALS 2. And then depending on which drug, it gets, it's a scalable thing, so.
So what's an example of a BLS?
Stub toe, sprained ankle, you know, something where we don't have to provide that advanced, you know, not, there's no airway support, there's no anything like that.
Okay.
Chief, tell me, I know back in 2018, I know we, there were some different numbers as far as BLS to ALS, what?
Yeah. Yes, so basically, with our, we found, that was one of the things with our old billing company, we found that that was actually reversed. We found that the, the BLS calls were actually more in the 60% range and the ALS calls were on the 40% range. When you look at a national average, when you're looking at EMS billing company, this is more correct. This is what, one of the kind of learning things we noticed with that. So, you know, the good thing with change, we've, being the good change with change.
So, so we left money on the table, then?
Yes.
Okay.
What do you mean by we left money on the table? What does that mean?
So if we would have billed the past however many years in the same threshold, you know, last time, I believe, it was close to 750,000 in 2018-ish. Now we've, you know, in one year change, we went up to 1.5 million. So there's a lot of, depending on, again, we get a lot more for an ALS call than we do a BLS call.
So what, why were we billing BLS instead of ALS? Who...
The billing company was, not us.
Who was?
The billing company.
The billing company. And so we were not able to recoup the years past? We were not?
Nope.
Okay.
Well, we, we're in litigation with them.
So, two, sorry, 2021, again, this is kind of the year to date for a whole fiscal, or whole, I'm sorry, whole calendar year. So far this year, we've billed about 4,500 calls. Again, same, same number percentage-wise, it's, we're about 1.2 million with those numbers right now.
So now, this year was the COVID year.
Really last year more, half, half of this.
Well, yeah, well, from June to this June, basically, still COVID. So it's pretty much the same, because this is 62%, 38, and...
Which is, that's a, that's good. That means we're trending in that same area as far as ALS versus BLS calls. We're showing a pattern, which means it's...
Were any of them like COVID patients?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'm, to be honest with you, I can find that out. Yeah, I'm, to be honest with you, I can find that out for you and tell you, but there was certainly.
See, because in the calendar year of two thousand twenty, you had no COVID patients. They were the regular, you know, whether they were heart attacks, or, you know, like you said, spraining. So we don't have a number that separates these patients as COVID.
Well, remember, COVID's probably started January, February of two thousand twenty. So some of those numbers from last year certainly included COVID patients. And so then, this, this, and there, and, you know, right now, we're seeing an uptick as well, so.
So that we get reimbursed at all under any COVID money or care money under this?
Yeah, so not necessarily under this, because again, this is all just in, the insurance companies that bill. They're, they're just, it doesn't matter if you're having a heart attack or you're a COVID patient. You know, if we're rendering care, we're still going to bill those patients based on that type of level of care we're trying to provide.
So we didn't bill the federal government at all with any of this? We didn't get reimbursed?
This is just our EMS billing. Now, what this does allow us to do is, it benefits us because we're allowed to put in for some federal dollars and state dollars on a, on a different program. That's our P E M T and our P E M T M C O, which is the program that allows us to kind of recoup some of that money as far as providing, because we're a Medicaid or Medicare provider, if that makes sense. It's, it's very complex. I did a presentation last year on it. I'd be happy to sit down and kind of, it's, it's.
Would you, I would appreciate that, only because if we're sitting here to do a budget, I'd like to at least have some more specifics.
Sure. Be more than happy to do that.
It's, it's just part of an education for me and to understand this whole process.
Absolutely.
So thank you, I appreciate that.
One quick question on that one. So trend-wise, on your slide before, for a calendar year, you had fifty-six, fifty-seven hundred bill calls? Is that the apples-to-apples number to the next slide, just normalized for the date period that you have?
Right, yeah. So instead of just showing you this first six months, I kind of wanted to just show you a whole year, if that makes sense.
Well, what I'm saying is on the last slide, if that's the full calendar year for two thousand twenty, you've got fifty-seven hundred calls. So you're, you're going down a thousand calls, normalizing to another twelve-month period.
And what you also have to understand is, we haven't even really heard of busy months. You know, there are certain things we look at, you know, normally cooler months, we'll transport more because CHF patients or patients with respiratory issues, so.
So June to June is taking out seasonality, that gets you to the fifty-seven hundred. Is that how I should interpret that?
I mean, I think.
Well, yeah, I guess what I'm, I'm asking is that, you know, obviously, bill calls turn into revenue, right? And if, if we're trending down, is there a concern that we're going to not get as much revenue from these bill calls? But if you're saying that if we were to look, if we were at the end of two thousand twenty-one, and we said calendar year two thousand twenty-one, it might be closer to on par with fifty-seven hundred calls in your last slide?
Actually, I believe that, yes.
Is that the trend that you're, so fifty-seven hundred calls out of the, I think, for two thousand twenty or two thousand twenty-one, so far, we had like eighty-two hundred calls or eighty-four hundred. Does that kind of float, is it the same percentage year over year that you kind of see that trend?
Yeah, and that's what we're, again, what we're trying to aim and look at is see, you know, we've only had this, this company for the past few years. Hopefully, next year, we see that sixty percent, forty percent split as well, and, you know, around, around those numbers. Again, I, we can't predict calls, but about what we're looking at. Another thing, again, our Orange County contract, something we look at every year. Last year, in the contract area, there was two-hundred-and-thirty-six million dollars of taxable values out there, the MSTUs. For Orange County, that year, this year, they're, and again, it gets confusing with this, because their fiscal year is, it's different than ours. It's July through July, so when we look at that sort of thing, but the, the rate was two-point.
Chief, no, they're the same.
Our?
They're the same. Yeah, the county's fiscal year is the same as ours.
It's two-point-two-four for that, MSTUs for that year. So that gives us our five-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars we got this year, which we want, you know, that's a hundred percent. We were able to get that with our, with our contract and with our extra assistance.
So without that, I know that when you go back to Station Five, I don't, we don't need to go all the way back, but it really helped fund Station Five with this, this outside money from Orange County.
Sure. So now getting into kind of the nuts and bolts, what I want to do is just run through the continuational budget, and then go through our requests after that, if everyone's good with that, so. You'll see thirty-one hundred professional services, there's nothing on that slide. Getting into Fire Chief's Office, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead of myself. One thing we do in the chief's office, want to make sure we're looking at processes, we look at trends, purchasing, things like that, making sure that we're doing everything correctly. So again, the first slide is for the four thousand line. So send our personnel to our E S O seminar every year. You're going to see, we increased it by one person this year. We're on send, we send Chief Bowman, Chief Howland, Chief Sanchez to that seminar each year, so up to.
Okay, so I know, I must sound like a pest. E S O seminar, what is that?
That is, so E S O is our reporting program we use for our fire and EMS reporting on our computers. These seminars, anything that we increase as far as our, we add hydrants, if we add pre-plans, things like that, that those, those three gentlemen go and learn. And it's just an educational seminar to learn how to use the system better, what's the latest and greatest that's coming out of it and things like that.
So who is charged with that, with the EMS reporting? Who is in charge, who is charged with?
Oh, it'll be Chief Sanchez.
Who's that?
Chief San, well.
Okay, well, Chief Sanchez, and who else?
Then Chief How would do all kinds of different components of it. Really, him and Chief Bowman split.
And Chief Bowman?
Yes.
Is this like a normal thing to send them every year?
Yes, ma'am, for all the updates.
And that, and they need that certification? Is that, is that a certified?
It's not really a certification, it's a seminar.
Just a seminar?
Right, any of the updates or things that are coming out, things like that.
Okay.
And then the conference, you'll see there, the CAPCO and CACCO, those are all, again, the compliance certifications, which is for, specifically for Chief Sanchez. Again, those are things for HIPAA complacency and also our billing complacency. So those are requirements. And also added is our Engine Four final inspection, it's going to take place in South Dakota later this year. That's a three-thousand-dollar expense there, so that we can travel up there and do our final inspection for our truck.
I'm sorry, what is that, fire engine final inspection? What is that?
So whenever we construct a fire engine, one of the last things before we accept it is to travel up to where it is produced and go through it with a fine tooth and comb, pretty much, to make sure that we're getting exactly what we, we asked for, all the specs and different.
All the specific, and who does that?
Typically, in the past, was Chief Thompson and another individual. This year, I would like to send actually someone new, a couple of new people, so that they can learn and things like that. And probably, again, honestly, I haven't chosen specifically who yet, but.
Okay. This is all interesting to me. Okay.
Sure. Forty-one hundred, you'll, you'll see nothing. Forty-two hundred is just our normal freight and postage. We're trending the same that way, so it's nothing significant with that. Also, forty-three hundred utilities, we're trending the same with that, that includes all of our utilities for Station, all, all six stations. No changes there. Forty-four hundred rentals and leases, again, this is our copier lease and also our temporary housing at Station Six. This is our second year of our agreement with them for it to remain at the twenty-three, one-sixty, and that includes all of our utilities with that. You also see, if it's forty-five hundred, there's nothing. Forty-six hundred is just our normal repair and maintenance, paintings such around the admin office. We're trending the same there, so fifteen hundred is about the same. Vehicle maintenance, forty-six fifty, again, with Charlie, we're for the staff vehicles. Again, these are just the fire staff vehicles, that's trending around, around the twenty-five hundred as well. Something we added in the forty-seven hundred line, we had our stationary in there. This year, we've started sending home an internal newsletter, named it Smoke Signals. It's kind of something that just goes out to all our firefighters to give them every quarter, to see what's going on with the department, some announcements and things like that. We wanted to come up with ways that we can communicate with, through COVID. You know, a lot of times it's hard. We did some, you know, Zoom stuff and things like that, but it's just kind of a nice thing that everyone seems to enjoy. Office supplies, again, we're trending around the same, around six thousand for fifty-one hundred. Fifty-two hundred, again, the only thing we added there was the annual award ceremony, something we haven't been able to do in the past couple of years, so Lieutenant Mayor really wants to take advantage of that, so that's under forty, fifty-two hundred. Fuel, we're trending the same, fifty-two fifty, fifty-four hundred, that's our annual subscription for Chief Bowman. And so he can look up codes and things like that, so that's, that's around the same for that. Fifty-five hundred, nothing for now, and sixty-three hundred, infrastructure, nothing. So any questions thus far on the Fire Chief's Office?
So now we're looking at this here. So I have to go back to that one, wait a minute.
Okay.
Okay, so this one was twenty. Yeah, four-five. I'm looking. Okay.
Yeah, if they're, if they're blank or the same, I just skip, okay. Twenty-one twenty suppression, again, thirty-one hundred, there's nothing, thirty-four hundred, there's nothing. Four thousand, travel per diem for suppression, we wanted to, again, include the National Fire Academy. This is a reimbursement for personnel who are accepted to attend. It did reopen earlier part of this year, I believe in May, so they're accepting applications at this time. This allows for us to reimburse further meals, any other incidentals.
Just as a release to training, I know that there's some in the other fund. Just when we get to that point, just if we can pause and talk about it, because there's, there's a larger pool of funds over on the EMS side, right? I just wanted to understand the difference between suppression and that fund.
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely. Forty-one hundred, there's nothing, forty-two hundred, freight and postage, there's nothing. Everything, again, remember from last year, I transferred everything over to the Fire Chief's Office. Forty-four is rentals, forty-five, nothing there. Forty-six hundred, repair and maintenance, building on equipment for suppression has definitely gone up some. We had to, bunker gear repairs, we've seen an uptick in that, some of our trends. We are, as you know, we're buying a second set of gear for every firefighter that's out there. Also, there is, we increased that about for two thousand dollars. Chief Bowman needed some handheld radio equipment, so we added five thousand there as well. An FPA changed nineteen thirty-six, which is rescue tools. They're actually now requiring that we inspect all of our high-pressure and low-pressure airbags, so that's something we had to add to this line. S E B, S E B A repair and maintenance, remember of last year, when we were very fortunate, you guys allowed us to purchase the remainder of those that we definitely significantly went down from last year to this year as far as that. Something else we're looking at is replacing all of our iPad for vehicle, vehicle-mounted iPad mounts. There was a lot of wear and tear on those, and these are actually, the ones we're getting are very hardy, something that we think is going to help out a lot. So that went up total to eighty-five.
On, on that fund, too, I noticed on the breakout, you know, there's like twenty-five K for unexpected repairs. Is this the only location where, would these be general repair and maintenance items for each of the fire station would be covered in this fund?
Yeah, I know there's, we have some there, so this is more for, like, Chief Bowman help is a big part of our facilities. So if he sees something that needs to be taken care of out of ours, but also, now that we have our facilities, you know, Joe with facilities, he's been helping out a lot, so a lot of those can come from both sides. But this is kind of a quick, for us, that we were able to do some of that stuff. So again, some of the carpet and stuff we're talking about.
Right, I'm, but I'm, I guess the point that I'm getting at is, I, there's probably known repairs that are needed, and are those prioritized? Do we feel like this is going to cover those known repairs versus unexpected?
So again, this is a small piece of the pie that we just have kind of a quick, like, if he needs to run out and get something quickly, we can, you know, handle that without having to contact Joe. We've met, and we've met with Joe several times, and he's establishing a priority list for us to kind of, you know, handle some of those bigger, bigger things. Public relations, again, I'm sorry, forty-six fifty, our vehicle maintenance, that's one of those funds, we, you know, seems high, but we want to make sure that we keep that about the same. Again, always seems to happen at the end of the year, just recently, we had to replace and fix Engine Four. And then striping as well, so that's something we like to keep in place. Forty-seven hundred, there's nothing under that. Forty-eight fifty, PRs, we did go up about three thousand dollars, you know, this year. Lieutenant Mayor did a fantastic job with A F D TV and programs like that, also increasing our camps. That's one thing that staff was really wanting to do, so we're able to take care of that with a slight increase for the coming up year. So of course, it's something very important. Forty-nine oh-three is not in there. The fifty-two hundred line, and you're going to see this in both EMS and in fire, prices have gone up, you know, post-COVID, you know, knock on wood, post-COVID, things like that, we're seeing some of the changes and trends, again, that we want to make sure that we're taking care of. So our polo shirts, cancer shirts, things like that are all about the same. We went up two thousand dollars in our bunker boots, seemed to kind of, we'd look at our safety committee and things like that. We want to track trends, and one of the things that happened with that was some of our boots, we noticed were falling apart. It was, seemed to be a particular brand, so we added a little bit more money this year to kind of, you know, replace those as we see fit. P P E as a whole, we went up a thousand dollars, just based on our trends. Big thing in there, hazmat, and that's why I kind of named it a top B kit. So there's different level of hazmat kits when we respond to hazmat scenes. And our B kit was one that's been needing to be replaced for a while, so it's actually for a bigger drum size. There, there's different sizes, A, B, and C kits you can deal with. So that we needed to replace, that's ten thousand dollars we added in there. We went up on our firefighting foam, just because of the cost, hoses and nozzles as well. And then bunker gear replacement, we added in enough, again, it's our trending thing we're going to do each year, just replace firefighter gear every year, so everyone's on a cycle to replace it every five years. So that way, hopefully, within three or four years from now, everyone's going to have a second set. And also for attrition and things like that.
So may I ask you a question? With the gear, if they, if it's damaged, do they have a backup, or do you have to order one?
Well, so if it's damaged, that's, there's actually something there for repair, and that's probably on repair and maintenance as well. It's sent away, it's fixed. A lot of times, they'll ship us gear for them to use temporarily. But that's why we're in the process of getting everyone a second set of gear. That's our five-year kind of program, I think we're in year two or three of it. So hopefully, again, then those next few years, everyone's going to have a second set.
So if they're exposed to some kind of hazmat or chemical or whatever, and they have one gear, what do you do with that gear?
Well, again, if we need to gross decon it, you know, certain, when we send it away to be cleaned, we also have in-house, we have the, for lack of a better word, big washing machine that can clean that stuff. So after post fires, you'll, you know, if you ever come in the station, you'll see it running. A lot of times, we'll see their gear hanging to dry, different things like that. So we do have certain things for normal run-of-the-mill stuff, but if it's significant enough, you know, if it warrants it, we'll dispose of it if we have to, you know, but a lot of times, we're able to clean and repair it and stuff like that. We also actually established, even our new hires, rental gear. So, you know, the, the companies can actually send us while we're waiting, so when we hire somebody, a lot of times, we have to size them. It takes a good while to get their actual real gear, so they'll be in temporary gear for a little bit. So there are options out there.
Okay.
You, you touched on it, so saying that this is the third year of a continual program to get to the second set of bunker gear. So if we've got one oh-seven in the, in the department, so I would expect one more year before we get to a hundred, and then seven more. And then you said you were going to go on a cycle every five years, so like twenty percent of the bunker gear would be replaced every year after that, or?
I'm sorry, no, every, every year, we're, we're. I'm sorry, no, every every year we're we're budgeting to replace twenty five sets.
Replace or so, I'm sorry for my confusion. So is this to add a second set of bunker gear or to replace bunker gear that's already in possession? Or when we go into the maintenance mode, are you replacing both for twenty five people every year?
No, no, is it? No, we're not. And that's gonna look convenient, so.
And the only reason I'm pressing on this one, because this is a larger expenditure, right? So I just want to get that clear.
No, um if if we have, I'm a new firefighter.
Mm-hmm.
Or even existing fire, we we kind of did a study to see who needed gear sooner than later. Um what we did is instead of, because bunker gear actually is technically good for ten years.
Okay.
It expires after ten years. So what we decided to do is replace it every five years. So that way, now at five years, you have one set of your older gear and one set of new gear.
So you're just staggering. Okay, I follow.
Um so that's fifty two hundred, fifty two fifty, fuel is the same, fifty four hundred. Um books publications, uh this is something we had a lot of success with this year. National Testing Network is a a company we went with uh as far as new hire processes. When we uh put out, um when we hired this year, we had a over a hundred and twenty applicants um that went through the system, and we were able to vet through the system. Um so it's a very worthy worthy uh network. Also, it's widely used throughout central Florida, um so that's something we want to continue with that. Um also in here is our promotional testing. Uh it's increased because we're gonna, what I want to do every year is have a promotional testing process every January. Whether we use a whole list or not, I just want to reestablish that every year, so.
If we can just real quick, back to fifty two fifty, you said there's no change in fuel and gasoline. I think in the police department, they've factored in that there's a a change because of problem probable increase in costs and things like that. Is there any expectation here? Is that worked in other than this?
No, as far as the fuel, we're actually, when we looked at and saw our trends, there was, we were still under within that threshold.
So even though there's an anticipation that increased fuel cost and increase in call volume, you're still good with the numbers that are already there? Okay.
Um, sorry, oh, promotionals, uh those those are included as well in fifty four hundred. Uh training line fifty five hundred, um we have two thousand in there for the miscellaneous props, um and uh so that's throughout. The sixty two hundred, there's nothing in there, uh sixty four hundred for suppression, again, uh brush truck uh replacement. Again, that was, this is our third year of that. Um again, we're replacing the pump and the decking on our existing brush trucks. Um also, something we want to start this year is a SCBA bottle replacement uh program. Um we want to um replace a certain number of bottles each year and upgrade to uh forty five minute bottles versus thirty minute bottles. Um it's kind of the trend that the uh NFPA is recommend recommending, so we're gonna phase in those bottles as well. Um and we'll get into any.
Ask, okay, one question.
Yes, ma'am.
SCBA bottle replacement program, what is SC?
So SCBA is a self-contained breathing apparatus. So it's our air packs. In fact, interesting fact, if you add a U in there, it's SCUBA, self-contained underwater breathing apparatus. Any other questions on suppression? Before we get to, right? Um EMS, uh thirty four hundred, again, our contractual services, Stericycle is our um local um company that gets rid of our biohazardous waste. Uh good thing with them, they get, we get training each year uh through them, and it's our public sharp disposal as well, also our uh our clinic. Um so other stuff in there, our striker protection warranties uh for our monitors and as well as our batteries are included in this. Um four thousand, again, there's no travel per diem, forty one hundred, no no communication, forty two hundred freight. Forty four hundred again is our oxygen um uh in cylinder rentals, so our larger cascade systems located Station One and Five, we actually uh rent those. That's why they're under rental leases. They're about a five percent increase in our uh cost this year. Uh forty five hundred, there's nothing. Forty six hundred again is repair and maintenance, um kind of like it was under suppression. We're seeing about a five percent uptick in some of that stuff, anything from our stair, our suction units to our actual owned um O two bottles, or AEDs and things like that. So twenty six fifty for that. Um forty six fifty again, uh that's again uh looking at our vehicle maintenance, uh thirty eight, five, eighty seven. Um anything related to our amelices, when you do any vehicle maintenance with that. Um something we wanted to, and the only reason I have this on the slide, kind of uh what we needed to take care of this year. This year has certainly brought into light that we don't know what's gonna happen. Um and I say that because we talked about earlier, our ESO reporting program is computer-based. Well, what happens if all that goes kaput for an afternoon thunderstorm or something catastrophic happens? We wanted to make sure that we could still uh run calls, so that's why this redundancy is in here for our paper. Uh we added that this year, paper reports and also EMS narcotic logs. Uh forty nine fifty against our EMS billing, that's uh the five point five percent, and also health data exchange included with that. Uh there's nothing with uh fifty one hundred, um fifty two hundred again, uh we see an increase uh due to our call volume, due to all the different things we're dealing with, due to the cost of medications going up. Um COVID again brought into light that we actually have to buy in bulk now. Before, we could kind of uh trend, look at our trends and piecemeal things together, but as we really, you know, even the distributors are making us buy in certain quantities now. So even medications and things like that, so that's why that kind of took a big.
When you say you're buying in bulk, like what was something you didn't buy in bulk that you're required to buy in bulk?
Uh medications. Um so before, if we, like a a drug we give for um diabetics.
Okay.
Uh D, now it's D ten, um and glucagon is a a drug. Well, we used to be able to buy it one, two, or three at a time, depending on what we needed to replace. Well, now they're making us buy twenty at a time because of just the way the world works right now, you know?
So when you buy in bulk, does any of it, is there an expiration with this medication? So what happens if you don't use all the medication in this bulk?
Then we have to.
Then we're just throwing away money.
Mm-hmm, let's turn it back. Yep. Now, that's what, a good thing, you know, one of the things we're looking at is how we're tracking, making sure when we do a weekly inventory. You know, the guys, the guys and girls do weekly inventory to make sure that they're identifying, you know, soon to expire medications or things that are coming off. But even even in non-COVID times, there was drugs that we would have to get rid of from time to time, which is part of doing business.
Yeah, but before you were just buying what you thought you needed, and you weren't throwing away more, but now if you're buying in bulk.
Sure.
You're throwing away a lot more.
Makes us do our job better. Honestly, it makes us keep more on track of things and making sure that we're following those trends and, you know, replacing what needs to be replaced and, you know, utilizing what we can.
Hmm, and all the vendors are making you buy in bulk?
A lot of them, yeah. Anything, Band-Aids, all that stuff.
That's an interesting trend, yeah. And I'm wondering why. I mean, COVID may have changed the medications you need to use.
There was, well, I understand there's a lot of shipping issues, you know, that they're dealing with too on their end, so it's 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 changed world, you know, it's.
It's just an interesting fact. Thank you.
Yep. Um fifty two fifty again fuel, um we're looking like we're doing pretty good with that. Um fifty four hundred is our Hand Tevi uh subscription. It's a digital-based program. Hand Tevi is our pediatric dose calculation. Um those are definitely stressful times uh for any paramedic or EMT who's dealing with that situation. So this is a quick kind of uh computer program that they can use, so it's something we want to continue.
Can you go back to fifty uh fifty two hundred again?
Yes, sir.
Uh i- is that figure correct?
Oh, the fifty six, I'm sorry, the two fifty six.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. Not the two fifteen, I apologize.
All right, okay.
Um, let's see. Um EMS uh training, fifty five hundred, again, um what what's required each year for us to maintain our certifications. BLS, ACLS, um even PALS, um I we also want to implement um narrative training this year where we how, teaching our paramedics kind of to write um narratives for documentation purposes correctly, and that certification falls under here, what we talked about earlier also, not just the class, but the actual certification itself. That's the training.
I have one question.
Mm-hmm.
Are the firefighters paying for their own certification, or are we paying for it?
We're paying for this.
And do they go once a year, once every two years? How how does that work?
We do it every year. Um it's only typically only required every two years. Actually, in fact, our paramedic uh licenses and our um um EMT licenses are due every other year. But we we pay for their, as far as their certification, is that what you're asking?
Right.
We pay, they pay for themselves, I'm sorry.
They pay for their own certification?
Right.
And for, and and when they have to renew their certification, who pays for that?
They do.
They do.
These individuals, yeah. But the the training to go into it, we pay for.
So the, I'm sorry, no.
Sure, I know, it's good. So this, what we're talking about here is the actual cert, the classes to maintain that certification.
Okay.
So um PALS, BLS, ACLS, you know, those are very big, they're not cheap classes, so we pay for that. When they actually pay for their paramedic license or EMT license, they pay for that themselves.
Oh, they pay for that?
Yeah.
But their certifications and any extra training, we pay for.
We pay for EMS.
Only because that's part of why we keep the ISO number one, is to ensure that.
This is EMS.
EMS?
Right, this is the EMS side.
Okay.
ISO is the fire side.
Okay, so EMS side.
I'm sure I had a question.
And how does that get measured? Um you know, in the department, how does that get measured as opposed to um the IO, the ISO? How does that get measured?
So the fire training?
Yeah.
So basically, there are certain amounts of per hour, uh it's different categories that they're required to meet, company training. Um there's uh the no longer night training, used to be night training, um multi-company training. Um there's uh facilities, which is, we're very fortunate, we have our own facility here. Um you know, they they actually have to be um down at the training center to get that credit hour. Um and there's different parameters that that actually takes, so all that is done in-house.
So if if we hire a firefighter that doesn't have the paramedic uh certification, do we pay for that paramedic? Uh for him to go to the paramedic school?
I'm hoping you say yes in a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that was my question. So there's a hundred thousand plus worth of training that's not in the budget yet, it's on your wish list. My question is, you know, on the EMS side, okay, I see that for the state-required certifications, that's what that budget's for, got it. On the suppression side, we've only got, what, two K budgeted for meal reimbursement if they go to the Fire Academy or the Fire Institute. But there's certain training that's required for the apparatus that we use, there's certain training that would be beneficial or maybe even required, I don't know, for ISO one uh rating retention, all that sort of thing. Why why would we not budget for those items?
Well, okay.
Like, I'll use Tower Truck for example.
Sure. So to kind of separate the two first, ISO, anything ISO-related, we do here in-house. Um anything that moving forward in the future, what I've proposed the last two years, I'd like to see some of that reimbursement for some of that outside training. You have outside training versus inside, um in-house training. Um one of the things that I kind of pride myself on as a training chief is we were able to provide Fire Officer One, Fire Officer Two, Inspector, Investigator, all those classes um in the past year for free, um because we have a number of our personnel who are certified instructors in those genres. Um so we were able to take advantage of that and offer those classes here. In fact, uh just the other day, we did a live fire instructor class here. Um what we're planning on doing very soon in the near future is um uh pumping, pumping things, pumping uh app, pumping apparatus or uh the driver certification um in the future. And and we have to understand is so, it's been a rough year. We've talked about it many times. But as far as training is concerned, we had to shut down training because of COVID, because of certain numbers. We've had to stop a lot of different things that we normally do, the things we pride ourselves on, especially this guy. You know, I love the training aspect. I love, that's, you know, where we came up, and we were able to provide that to our own people. Outside training, absolutely necessary as well. That's something I want to see in the future, and that's why it's part of the request, you know? Um good thing about the uh the fire world is a lot of those certifications, Fire Officer One, Fire Officer Two, different things like that. You can actually go to the colleges and those count, once you provide your certificate, it actually counts as college credit. So we're actually providing by teaching here, believe it or not, we're actually providing college credit uh classes as well. Now, again, can we always add more? Absolutely.
So I guess the question would be then, so I get that you're saying there's internal train opportunities, you have people in-house that are certified to train on certain topics.
Yes, sir.
So how I should read your wishlet item, wishlist, wish list item for the thirty one thousand rounded is training classes or courses that are outside external training that we would not be able to otherwise internally be able to offer?
Which, so certainly, so, well, we can also offer them internally, you know, so a lot of times, like, if something was coming up in the future, we will announce it, hey, this class is coming up. You know, so um the inspector, there's a a plans review class coming up as well that's related to inspector. Well, we kind of did a, asked, hey, is there a class coming up that people need? We'll identify some of those things and target those certain things. But for some reason, they can't make it, they're on vacation or something like that. I still want them to be able to go elsewhere as far as getting some of that. Um you know, some of the specialized training as well, like you mentioned Tower Truck related stuff, we did a Tower, we did Truck Ops here last year. You know, some of, one of the first things we did. Um you know, so we're able, again, we're very fortunate, we have our own training facility. In fact, many other chiefs are wanting to get on board to use it because another one's going away.
Yeah, I I mean, from where I say, what I want to make sure is that we fund the training. If we, if you as fire leadership are saying to your your rank and file, you've got to do these things to do your job here, and this is the status quo.
Absolutely.
None of those employees should have to spend a dime on on themselves that this is a requirement that you're putting on to them. Either it's a department policy, if it's a state mandate, if it's for us to retain, you know, ISO rating, all that sort of stuff. I don't want any of them to have to have to be out of pocket for that.
Sure.
So whatever that number realistically needs to be, that's what I would be most interested in.
Yeah, and and again, understand, if if you want to move forward, let's say you want to become an engineer, we're offering that class coming up in a month or so. You know, that we're providing those opportunities uh for those individuals as well as if we can, provide that elsewhere. Um moving up to lieutenant, that's one of the big things, Fire Officer One was one of the big things, even Inspector, you know, different things like that. So as we see this, us progress through this next year or so, hopefully getting out of this um COVID era, we're gonna start doing a lot more of that, be able to provide that.
Do you know if other fire uh departments are offering different courses that maybe we can send our firefighters to? And just pay for the fee to be part of that?
Certainly, certainly there are opportunities with that. Um again, but believe it or not, a lot, more of them come to us. You know, we've, when we offer classes, we've had from all over the state come traveled to us, you know, because we were able to provide the same courses. Um the State Fire College is still a hundred and fifty bucks for a normal course. That's kind of why I did two um for this year, so each employee can go to two different classes, courses out there. So there are definitely, definitely opportunities.
So we provide it to our own, but those that are coming from outside, that's actually revenue for us?
Yeah, a lot of times we'll charge, you know, we have a separate uh revenue line that we can, you know, we'll charge fifty bucks a class. A lot of times that attracts more people, because if the state's charging one fifty, we can do it here for, you know, a little cheaper, so. And and it's something we definitely have done in the past, and I'm looking forward to get, doing it again, you know?
Well, I'm kind of like on board with that if if a certain course is mandated, state mandated, and they have to have it so that we can continue to have the rating that we do. Um I just feel that it should not be the firefighter's responsibility to pay for it. I think it it falls on us. If we're, if we're requiring them to have this course and this certification, then we should be paying for it. And that adds up to, you know, having our, to continue our ISO. And that adds up to, you know, having our, to continue our ISO rating, because that's important.
Right, again, separate the two, ISO, anything ISO required or mandated, we, they do not pay a dime. We do all that in-house. This is extra for advancement, if they want to go become an engineer, they want to become a lieutenant, things like that. Again, we provide a lot of them, and we want some funding to send them in the future to other things as well.
Yeah, yeah, because, I mean, you have, you have different flavors, right? The required, you know, non-negotiable type of training certifications.
Yep.
Like the thing that you're talking about advancement. It, yeah, it may be a, a kind of an elective, I guess, for a resource to say, hey, I want to go for advancement, but it behooves the city, because what you want is a well-trained, well-certified candidate to go through your ranks, because you always want to have the best department available. So I, I'd say the required for sure, but then still have a program in place for people that want to do those elective or ad hoc type of training to obviously promote that, because we want to have the most talented workforce that we can have.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, that's something, again, what we kind of put in place before was a succession plan, was a, you know, certain checkoff requirements. I wanted the guy who was writing up as a lieutenant to be as certified as the person he's replacing. So when some of those requirements, we start to work through some of those, we're going to set up a schedule, we're going to set up all this, these programs and things like that.
Have we ever been in a situation where we have paid for the advancement, the training, all of these different things, not because it was mandated, but to help prepare them, and then they leave us to go to another place?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. So that's, it's, part of it is just the.
And a lot of times when we.
Just the market.
Yeah, and when we are going to set up this program before, when it was in place before, if we did reimburse, it was a reimbursement. So you had to earn that grade first or that cert. And also, a lot of times you'd sign a contract, so you're going to remain with us for a certain amount of time.
So there's an opportunity that we will pay for it, but they'll commit to, if we're committing on that side, they'll commit to us as well, so.
Yes.
Okay.
And so are the instructors that we have that are teaching in-house, are they paid for teaching?
Yes.
All right. And then the second part is, those firefighters that decide to do something beyond the call to do to get additional certification, is that an incentive for them for doing that?
Yeah, and that's certainly something we're, we're working towards and moving forward in the future. Inspector, absolutely. You know, there's, there's your, there's a five-hundred-dollar inspector incentive. Paramedic being our biggest one, there's an eight-thousand-dollar incentive with that. Again, we're looking at all these different types of things. What I want to be able to do is establish the step program, establish, and we got it started, and then everything had to stop. We had to stop training altogether, we had to do a lot of things, but over these next couple of years, I really want to see, year one, you have to meet these certain requirements to do the certain things. And by doing that, I wanted to be able to provide what you just mentioned, you know.
Since COVID, because for me, with training and, is a way of retaining our very best. So since COVID, how many firefighters have left us?
I don't.
Not due to retirement at all, eliminate that, or younger ones.
I think two.
Two?
Yeah. And one went to, I have to look specifically, but as far as retirement and, you know, other things, we've had a lot of people retire this year, we've had a lot of people, you know, leave for, for different reasons, but I'm trying to remember.
So right now, how many do you have that are five, ten, fifteen, and twenty years? I mean, do you have that number?
I'd have to get that for you.
Yeah. Like under five, then between five and ten, and ten and fifteen, and then twenty. Because twenty is then there on the drop program after twenty, or if they choose to?
Twenty-two for us.
Twenty-two.
Yeah.
But, you know, part of the, a lot of the under fives, you know, we, we've added, you know, Station Five and Station Six, so a lot of the, you know, five-year hires are because we've added two.
Well, those are the ones that we want to keep. Not that I don't want the guys that are ten, but, you know, if we're spending the time, the money, and we're asking them to be the best, let's try and retain them, because training costs a lot of money. And, you know, me as, as a former law enforcement, that's part of building a department is retaining your very best. So if you can give me that number.
Yeah, absolutely, and that, you know, so that's a, that's a trend around the service, the fire service right now. There's a lot, you know, you go through generational things sometimes, and, you know, there's a lot of it, but we're trying, you know, we're, you know, we're trying everything we can.
Well, I don't think it's just limited to Chief Willem's presentation. I mean, for the rest of the directors that come up, I mean, attrition's always a fascinating thing, especially around budget time. I mean, we have to really understand why people leave the city. Is it voluntary, is it involuntary? For the involuntary thing, obviously, there's probably issues at hand there, but from the voluntary side, then you have to kind of, you know, subcategorize those people. Is it retirement? Is it because they found a more attractive position elsewhere? Was it money-driven, where they just happened to relocate jobs in industry? Who knows? But, you know, if it's, if everybody's attriting the city because of financial reasons, okay, it might lend some more support to increasing things here or increasing things there, putting more benefits, packages available versus saying, hey, I just decided to change industry, or I'd move into Idaho, you know. But it would be nice to see that, if we could.
So where are we now?
Sixty-three hundred, there was nothing in EMS, sixty-four hundred, again, is our replacement ambulance. I'm going to get into our depreciation scheduling things here, but this is for replacing ambulance twelve, which is a seventeen-year-old ambulance, two thousand and three. Three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars total, and all that includes the fire column, the power load systems, Lucas chest compression system, the cardiac monitor, as well as the ambulance mounts as well. So with that, now we're going to get into the request.
And just the, I, I was just amazed at the Lucas compression system, a thirty-six percent increase in survival rate. That's tremendous.
Yeah, it's neat.
That's tremendous. Anything like that, obviously, we need to make sure that we get those things in your hands.
Yes, sir, thank you. Again, kind of talked, just talked about it, the depreciation schedule. So this is our, something I started a few years ago. Really wanted to give you the data behind why, you know, we're doing, asking for certain things. This is just our fire administration side. We did a, just straight-line depreciation, chose a replacement useful years in life for those, for those types of vehicles, and then through attrition. So you'll see that there's a two thousand and six F-150 that we, it's time to replace. That'll be coming up here in, in the future when we discuss some of that stuff, what we're, what we're going to be asking for. Suppression, you can see here, again, all our different apparatus, things we're going to be asking for, mainly Engine Four, which is still has some useful life left in it, but we're actually going to be replacing Engine Eleven, which is a nineteen ninety-eight. You're going to notice some differences as far as the useful life. I kept all the American Le Frances at twenty years, and any new apparatus, we've got Rosenbauer's at the useful life of fifteen years. We just found some of our trends we're looking at and things like that with the new electronics and how they, you know, things were built better, for lack of a better word, back then, so they're able to hang on a little bit longer. But with this, this year, we're going to have all of our front-run trucks will be our new Rosenbauer's, and we're going to continue on that cycle as we continue out. The other thing you'll see down there is a brush truck pump replacement, that's two thousand and twenty-one. And we can see also for Engine Fifty-One for next year, which is also something that's on the request. And our truck we're looking at, Hazmat One, which is our old reserve rescue truck, is out at Station Five currently. That is a reserve vehicle, something we're going to be looking at in our, in our CIP as well. EMS, again, understand some of the things we've been dealing with. We actually ordered and just received the other day our ambulance for nineteen-twenty. So that, that bottom number you see there, we just received it the other day, it's supposed to go in service at the end of the month. It's taking over a year to have turnaround in some of our ambulances, so we want to make sure that we're staying on top of that. We are currently have on order, and it should be here within the next six months, the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two ambulance. And then the following, I'm sorry, the twenty, twenty-one ambulance. And then what we're asking for coming up this year now, and the one we just asked for is also being replaced. So we're, as long as we do one a year, we're doing well with ambulances there, definitely run trucks, we use the, use them a lot with our call volumes increasing and things like that, so we just want to make sure we're tracking all that. So we all know we're growing, plain and simple, period. This is the, one of the most updated maps from our community development. Anything in blue you see there is residential, anything in brown or orange is commercial. And it's interesting to look at this map, you know, anything towards Station Three's area where it's very already dense, kind of towards the downtown area, there's small pockets of things, but our development we see is going along the southwest side. Also up to the northwest side as well, we're potentially, you know, we're going to start talking about Station Seven in the next couple of years. Also looking at, we kind of talked about some of our numbers earlier, you know, our population now. We know we're getting ready to explode. Central Florida area as a whole, starting to see increases in these numbers. And I talked about earlier, where I'm, I'm very comfortable in that one-point-nine-nine to two firefighters per thousand range. When we look at some of these numbers and some of these things we're seeing, we need to make sure that we're paying attention where we see growth numbers-wise. This is the current under-construction residential properties. So we see twenty-five-hundred, twenty-eight dwelling units that are currently under construction. When you apply our two-point-six-nine average per household, under construction right now, we know there's a growth of five thousand coming. And if we keep looking at that each year, we're going to need people, we're going to need equipment, we're going to need certain things. So we want to make sure that we have a plan in place for that, so.
Can I, can I, can you go back to where you had the one previous? Can you tell me where all your warehouses are right now?
Oh, well, they're.
Because that's, that's, that's important to me.
Sure, the specific, anything in, again, anything in blue is commercial-related. So a lot of that different stuff around Station Six and things like that.
Okay, so for me, because I'm a former first responder, that's basically a new product for us here in Apopka. These large warehouses where we have, they're just tremendous. For me, it's important that our firefighters are trained to be in those warehouses, because the last thing that I want for any of our firefighters is to go to a fire or even, as we have seen from television, and we can't pretend that it won't be here, a disgruntled employee going in with a mass shooting. And I think it's important for our first responders, police and fire, to be prepared to approach that type of environment, you know, violent environment, whether it's fire or a disruptive. So that's important to me, that I hope that you can incorporate that as part of your training.
Sure, absolutely, and, and, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
But that's one of the, one of the most important things we do, pre-fire planning. You know, that's, every six months, all of our guys and girls go out and they look at these properties. You should never be going up to a building on fire, being the first time you've ever seen it, in my opinion, and that's, that's how it should be. As a firefighter, as a professional, that's something that's, that's one of the most important jobs. If there's nothing else you can accomplish, is go do your pre-plans. That can save your life, is what I tell them, you know, and that's something, again, we're trying to get back in the swing of things, you know, not being able to go out and visit people and things like that, but all that we were able to do before is update our contact numbers. Well, go out and look at these buildings. That's part of your job, you know, and emphasizing some of that stuff. And, you know, we were able to reach out, saw earlier this year, even at the hospital, it's been around for a while, but we practiced a scenario of getting someone off the roof, you know, and doing certain things like that. And all these types of things are vitally important, you know.
Okay.
And pre-fire planning is, is an ISO requirement, for one, and they go out. We actually do it twice a year, you know, it's something, even though it's only required once, I like to get the guys and girls to get out there as much as possible, because that's critical.
That's very important to me, that our, all our first responders are trained and can approach any of these warehouses, especially these in the industrial area, commercial area.
Sure, absolutely.
I appreciate that.
And the blue is residential, the brown is non-residential, right?
Yeah, there's browns.
Blue is residential, brown is commercial.
The brown is the warehouse.
Right. Yes. I think I said it right the first time and gone, I apologize. Again, looking at the total number of dwelling units that are under construction now, that's just population we know is coming. It's hard to predict certain things as far as travels and things like that, people traveling through each day, but this is something that we can hold concrete. So kind of go through each one. Fire Chiefs Division, something has come about recently, Quality Assurance Specialist. It's something we're asking for this year. Really what we want to make sure that we're do, and what this person would do is, it would actually be a civilian position. What they would do is review, evaluate anything from our patient care to types, certain types of calls. There are certain requirements, and you can see there, the Orange County Medical Director is actually going to make this, imagine a mandate, something that's required under sixty-four J, and the current medical director is pushing out. We have requirements, we're going to have to report stuff daily, weekly, monthly, and then we have certain timeframes where, for instance, a code or where we do CPR, that has to be turned in within twenty-four hours and reviewed. So this person is going to be instrumental in reviewing some of that stuff.
Real quick, just to kind of level set for the, all of these presentations, so maybe this is a question for Edward real quick. So what we, everything that you're viewing right now is in your wishlist document, meaning, how, how do we interpret that, Edward? So is anything that was before this, the wishlist item assumed to be in budget and balanced? And then everything on this causes us to be over?
What?
What you anticipate our budget number to be?
What you'll see from the departments commissioner is, the first part of their budget is their operating, their normal operating. These, these sections that you'll see after this, departments column, wishlist column, they call them little different, different things or whatever, but these are the items that they would like to add into the budget. What you will see on Wednesday are some of these items have gotten into that budget. Some of these wishlist items from all the departments, across all the departments, on Wednesday, when you see the mileage, when you set the mileage rate, these items will be listed, the ones that got in, the ones that are in from the wishlist.
So do we know that now? Can you point to those as we're talking through them? It's.
Yeah.
How my mind's working, I'm just saying, hey, do we commit to something and we're just causing overage and overage and overage and overage? Versus, okay, some of these are already in and assumed to balance?
Yeah, we can tell you which ones are in.
Okay.
So what?
Sorry about that.
Go through, I guess we'll go through those lists, and then we'll kind of tell you what, after we all sat down, everybody sat down, the priority, how they prioritize them, and which ones are in.
Yeah, because it, it kind of changes my line of questioning, because I want to press more if it's, if they're trying to, if we're trying to build the business case for this particular spend, I don't want to belabor the point if it's something that's already kind of in, in the budget.
So this position is in, really bad. This position is currently funded. So we'll go through them as you go.
Okay, sorry. Another position in the Fire Chiefs Office, a Fire Inspector, again, this is going to be a civilian person. As we're growing, we see a lot more of the commercial structures coming in, things like that. Chief Bowman works, works, works hard, and we want someone to help supplement some of that stuff. This is going to be more for the staff-type inspections, you know, when new businesses are coming in. We have, you know, our, our personnel goes out and does the annuals, which are more of the checking the fire extinguishers and things like that. So certainly a Fire Inspector, again.
So, so this is in the budget?
This position is currently not funded in the budget, but what you have when you get to the, when you, when you have the Building Department, they have funded an extra inspector that they want to kind of work with Fire Department with, from the fire side as well. So you're going to see the Building Department, when they bring their budget, they have, there is a position budgeted for another inspector, but they're going to try to bring those two together. You're going to see that when you see the Building Department. So they have a new position that, that could serve as the Fire Inspector position, as well as a regular inspector. So we are adding a, we are adding an inspector to the overall city.
But there would be a requirement of different certifications?
Correct, so we, that's, that's their goal, is to find somebody that can.
That has both.
Correct.
Does it exist?
That will be something that we'll be looking for.
Okay.
You know, I think what we're trying to do is, we're trying to bring, you know, we have new software coming for the Building Department as well, where the Fire Department will be part of that software as well, where they can go in and make their choice, you know, the inspections that they look at, the things that they look at from this standpoint, they can also be a part of that, that checkoff in that, in that process or in that software. So basically what we're doing, the Building Department's going to add a position. So basically what we're doing, the Building Department's going to add a position, so we're asking them to kind of work together with the Fire Department and, um, and look for somebody that maybe can be a Fire Inspector, um, that can work with the Building Department. Because a lot of these inspections they're talking about in this position is your new construction, not your ongoing inspections, but your new construction or your new, new, um, um, things that are coming on. They have to work closely with the Building Department, because they sign off on from the building, from the Fire Inspector, Fire Inspector part for the new construction.
Alright. Um, next request, paint and update the fire training tower. Um, again, that's our actual burned building in our training tower, um, something we use a lot, you know, there's a lot of wear and tear and things like that. So we're asking for fifteen thousand for that.
Is, is, I know that you're asking for that, are there grants out there that, that you can look for that would help you with something like this?
Um, I'm sure, possibly, you know, there's some certain things we can look at and update, I'll get with Dr. Jackson and see if there's particulars for, um, you know, painting of certain structures, certainly.
Okay.
Um, our request, uh, is Station One upstairs, um, we know we're working, Chief McKinley's working hard as well on the new public safety building. Um, but this gets a lot of wear and tear, we have forty-two personnel assigned to Station One. So, um, we're looking at something that may be a little more sanitary as well, so some sort of laminate flooring for the upstairs area, uh, for that, that station, so.
Is this in?
Chief, this is not in currently, right? It's not in through the facilities either?
Um, that I'm not sure.
I'm thinking it maybe, you may see it on the facility side, I know there's, when you see facilities this year, Commissioner, you're going to see a lot of these items that have been added into facilities to take care of a lot of the repairs for the, for the buildings.
Yeah, cause something like this.
I think it's in the facility side, but when he presents his tomorrow, you'll see that.
Cause sanitary to me is a binary thing, I mean, it's either sanitary or it's not.
Right.
We need to have.
Especially when you have forty-two people in Station One?
Um, another thing, uh, you'll see this reduced, actually, Commissioner Smith is not wrong on this one, we just, uh, actually were able to squeeze some of it, some of it out this year. Uh, we did buy some, um, beds for Station, uh, Three and Four, uh, they're actually currently trying them out right now, so if we like them, we want to move forward with, uh, we want, we'll make sure, uh, they try them out first before we go purchase all of them, so that's something. We were able to squeeze out, uh, some of that this year, so we're only asking for ten for next year. Um, but again, we want to place, uh, box springs with platform type, uh, beds and foam type mattresses, and again, uh, that's what we're asking for, for that. Um, again, getting into training, this is specific to the admin staff, um, I want three hundred dollars for each personnel in there, uh, to be able to, um, you know, classes, training, uh, related to, uh, management certifications, uh, sounds wanting to something like an Excel class or something like that.
Commissioner, this item, this is your training that you were talking about earlier, Commissioner, about external training, this is included in the budget.
Okay.
What, what about the beds?
The beds are not currently, they're trying out, what they're doing is they're going to try the ones that they have now, we may be able to get more bed, more of them in this current fiscal year. So we're kind of waiting to see if they like them, we can get some, use the money that we've got in the current fiscal year, if not, then we will be, we will add those.
And I'm sensitive to that, so can you, can you prioritize the people that don't fit on the beds? I mean, at least, you know, like, I mean, that should be obvious, but, I mean.
It's not okay if your feet hang off?
Yeah, I wouldn't know how to sleep on a bed where my feet don't hang off, but.
Alright, um, and of course, a big one for us, uh, Station Six, permanent build out. Um, we have, you know, the, the monies that we allotted from state appropriations, but we want to make sure this is, uh, included. We did have a very good meeting with, um, the, uh, engineer and, uh, construction manager from Station Five and we're right on par with course as far as budgeting and things like that, so, or that's definitely exciting for us.
And this is included?
This is included.
This is included, this will be included in your fire impact fees, our half, our fifty percent of this will be included in the, from the fire impact fees. That was our match with the state's appropriation of, of one little over a million.
Is that a requirement to get that other half or, we, because the, the whole half, our half, the million bucks, will it hit fully in next fiscal year? Is it planned to be built within that timeline?
It is planned to be in the fiscal year, that's why it'll come in your budget this time, so that we can accept the appropriation from the state, we have our half, they can go.
Yeah, cause I thought Station Five, I think, spanned two fiscal years, if I have memory.
Yeah, we're hoping we can do it all in one.
Yeah, okay.
Right, and, and talking with the state as well, if need be, we can, you know.
We're trying to time, we're timing this up with Harmon Road, so we're trying to put all this together, so the Harmon Road and the station are all timed together, so that when the light and the road goes in, the traffic lights, emergency signal and everything's all timed and in the right spot.
So again, getting into suppression requests, uh, again, emphasize, you know, we know we're growing, um, we certainly have, uh, construction coming into place. And, you know, to start us going in the right direction, I really would like three additional firefighter personnel this year. Again, to maintain, maintain that per capita levels with our current growth and density model, we need to start increasing our staff levels. And having that plan as we look through the future, to see what we need to establish and where we can go at. And it is going to be an ongoing plan, um, with Station Six coming online, um, we're definitely going to have to add personnel just for that. And beyond that, you know, to make sure that we're meeting some of those, uh, some of those requirements and some of those.
Are we meeting the minimum requirement for, are they called apparatus? Cause I, I say fire truck for everything. If it's a three-man fire truck, if it's a two-man fire, are we meeting those standards? Or are we sending out an apparatus minus a firefighter?
So you have to look at, it's a complicated answer. We have assigned to our fire trucks, two, two personnel. Again, kind of talking what we were talking about before, we're a unique, um, city in the fact that we have a very large area, we have thirty-five square miles. And we have, um, a lot of, not as dense populations as certain areas. What we, what we're unique with is actually our squad vehicles, we have two, two-man units. That pretty much augments our manpower in certain applications. When you talk about standards or things like that, NFPA makes recommendations, um, because we are ISO one, we more than meet. We are required to have seventeen people on scene for any fire. ISO and/or NFPA doesn't care how those people get there, they can ride in a pickup truck, they can ride in whatever, they're just want that manning on scene within a certain amount of time. So because we have those two different units that can kind of augment that, we're able to meet and that's how we got our ISO one. We're also unique because, again, we talked about earlier, we're really the four-point-two-three number of stations. Five is a good number for us, we have six, so we're kind of spread out, we had to for our response times, to just get our people going. So we've kind of, you know, used a system that's unique to us, but it works. Now, what I want to see in the future is the increase of manning, something we've, you know, we've, we've never, you know, had that here, but it's something we want to look at. I want to apply that two percent, or two, I'm sorry, two-person per thousand in population and grow with that. So as we see our population increasing, that's when we need to increase those people on those apparatus, that's when I, that's why I'm asking for one this year. And next year with five, or I'm sorry, six opening, not only are we going to staff that at the fifteen people, so five people at that station, one backwards person on the engine, but increasing those levels throughout the next couple of years, I want to ask for eighteen that year, on top of the six we currently have there now. So when you look at some of that different stuff, and there's a way, um, we want to look, oh, I'm sorry, um, at a, an ongoing plan, but data-driven. You know, something you guys have always kind of emphasized is data-driven decisions. Well, in order for us to, um, meet those backwards people, seventy-five thousand is kind of where we're aiming at as far as our population number, so we can augment that as well. Then we'll be even better, because we'll have those squad units, so we can get places fast and, and augment some of that manpower, as well as having those people in place.
So, okay, so when we are transporting, okay, what goes in the ambulance when we're transporting? I mean, what personnel goes?
And the driver?
Is it a firefighter that's going? Alright, so tell me, cause I don't know the different apparatuses. Who is a standard or the minimum, uh, on a, on a truck? Like, which apparatus has to have a three-man and which one has to have a two-man?
Well, there's, so for our minimum staffing?
Right.
Engines have two and ambulances have two, and squads have two.
They all have two? None have three?
Even tower?
Even tower, yeah.
Even the tower, you're saying that that's the minimum standard that's required?
That's our, that's our minimum.
That's yours or is that state required?
That's our current, and that's what, so when you look at how we're measured, so, ISO looks at what we send. NFPA makes certain recommendations and things like that, so when we look at, um, the number of people we're sending, ISO required, they ask what we send, literally, what we send. For our fire, we send two engines and a tower, that's all they care, care about. All the other apparatus that are going, we also send two ambulances, which is another four, four personnel. Send two squads is another four personnel, send a district chief, which is another personnel. When you look at those things and you're asking those minimum requirements, ISO has a different standard than even NFPA. And it gets confusing again, because ISO wants six people per fire truck. If we don't, that, again, our rating is all measured on how many people we put per those apparatus. So right now, we send seventeen people, ISO requires eighteen, we're deducted. Every, Orlando, Orange County, they're all deducted because those, they're not exactly those six people. When they ask, um, again, how they get there, the squads and different units like that, those are, those are different ways that we can apply those manpower in that certain area. NFPA, again, I think for residential fires and things like that, wants seventeen people if it includes a tower truck. It even writes out who's on required, and even the tower trucks require one person according to NFPA, literally says on there, one, one personnel to maintain the tower. That's still not adequate in my eyes, so are we moving forward, are we trying to establish some of this? Yes, but data-driven and providing some of these numbers so that we can get there.
So, again, I always like to play this one out, throw in money off the table for a second. So like Winter Park, I know that they put three people on their engine, two ambulance, I think they have four for other apparatus that they have. Their rate per mile, eight-point-seven, they're at two and a half rate per thousand. If, if you had the budget, would you pivot your thinking to say, I should really be staffing my engine at three people per engine? And because when you arrive on scene and you have two people on an engine apparatus, I'm sure there's duties that are performed right then and there in terms of getting equipment out and assessing the situation, that sort of thing. If there's only two people on scene, and especially, I mean, if you look at Apopka, when you factor in our Orange County service area, I'm looking at your table here, rate per mile is one-point-six-three. And we are thirty-five square miles, so I think you exacerbate an issue of having two people on scene, um, because we're so stretched out geographically. Because you mentioned a Cohen, Winter Garden, they're both plus or minus sixteen or seventeen square miles, we're thirty-five, and that's not even factoring in the Orange County area. So, i- if you had the budget, would you feel passionately that three people should be on an engine?
Absolutely, I mean, if there's no, that's something I want to aim for, budget or not, you know, that's something we need to move forward.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand, so we're asking about, how many people do you have on it now? Where, in your opinion, where do we need to be like now to make sure that we're promoting, not safety for our residents, I mean, but safety for the people that are responding to the calls in the department?
Sure.
So what, I mean, what are your thoughts there? And, and if we went to that route, what additional staffing would be needed to accomplish that?
So, um, yeah, I believe I mentioned this to you last year, you're never going to hear a Fire Chief says he doesn't have enough. You know, and, and certainly anything that if it's money's no, is endless, sure. You know, it's something, again, budget or not, it's something we want to move forward to in the future. And looking at those populations you're talking about, they're dense, they're denser, more denser in population, you know, again, we kind of had to, it's not, it's, we have six stations in, in, in an area where we require five, you know, those people maybe could have been reallocated or different things like that, but we're kind of, you know, we're wanting to move forward and, and grow at the same time, that a lot of that hap, you know, we're looking at all that stuff.
Right, yeah, and the point that I'm making is not necessarily the amount of stations, I feel like we're adequate there, um, not the, uh, per capita, because per capita on your, on your information, we're above where the, um, state is, I guess that's a state number that provides the guidance, or is it?
It's national.
Okay, a national number, but I, I guess I'm taking it more from the concerns I've heard from firefighters themselves. And so that's where the angle that I'm kind of talking from is, because we are such a large geographically laid-out city, if you have an engine that has two people on it where you feel like that maybe should be minimum staffing of three, because when they get on scene, you know, there's, you hope and pray this doesn't happen, but there's just, if something goes wrong and you're, we're not able to help a resident or a firefighter becomes in peril, um, because we should have been at three, and we didn't sit up here and discuss, okay, how do we get it? How do we get the budget to get you to the three people manning on an engine? And whatever other, you know, if the tower requires four or three, okay, so be it, but, you know, what, what does that look like and?
If, if we were in a different spot, if we weren't able to prove that we can, our response times, if we weren't able to say, you know, we, we provide this number of people on the scene within that certain timeframe that's allocated, I would be jumping up and down and screaming.
But I'm, but I'm going to play devil's advocate here though, because, okay, we arrive on scene, we've, we've made the, the time to make sure that we, our ISO is protected. Eventually seventeen people get there, but if I'm an engine arriving on scene very first and I've got two people in there and I've got specific duties that I have to do to get my equipment set up to address whatever situation is going on, and it's vital and critical that that, that third person could have saved someone's life and we were up here and we didn't provide the budget for you to operate at your most optimal, that's where, I just want to have that conversation to make sure that if we have it, again, we've got a thirty-three percent, you know, reserve fund. If we're saying that we'd be better, we would have a better operating model from a Fire Department to save lives or save department personnel by going to a three-person engine staffing, okay, we've got money to be able to do that.
If, and, you know, just, again, separate the two out, if you look at ISO, um, they require those six people per unit. A simple solution that even first came, was dissolve the squads, add that backwards person on each fire truck, kind of reallocate it that way. We literally lose our ISO, because now getting that same number of personnel on scene requires another apparatus to go. So those two people that originally were on, and I'm, I'm, I'm just. Those two people who were on that squad, that we could augment that manpower, now are split between two different apparatus. So now I have a first two engine, a second two engine, and to get that same person, I have to add that third engine. Now we add another six people that ISO requires. Now, do we want to develop all that stuff and have an actual number? If we wanted to add a third person to each engine and the tower truck, it's probably two-point-five million in just salaries. And also looking at some of that, that's our, our twenty-one people, pretty much.
Yeah, and, and dollars don't scare me. What we should be thinking about is not how much it costs, but what's the right? What's the minimum standard that we should have as a department to service both of our employees and the residents? And if, and if we feel, and I, I probably tend to disagree a little bit, but if we feel like two, two persons staffing on an engine, two people on a tower truck is the right staffing level, you, you're the expert, uh, not me, but I'm just saying, fight for the operating model that you want and then let us worry about how to fund it. If, and again, we're five people up here, my opinion could be vastly different than the four others that are sitting up here with me, but I, I don't want to let the first conversation be, well, that's going to cost two and a half million dollars, okay, it's interesting, but what do we get for that? And if we get a whole bunch out of it, then let's have that conversation.
And I don't want you to think that, don't want that, it's, it's, I'm trying to apply, like, data-driven decisions based on our size, our different populations, things that we can model. Because when we are sitting at seventy-five to a hundred thousand people over the next five to ten years, we're going to need probably more than that. You know, it's something we want to project and start, and that's why this year, I'm asking for those three to get us going in the right direction. On top of that, it's another three personnel for a district chief, which we'll get into in a minute, but that's something.
So can we do something internally and try and work with what we have? So that when we send out an apparatus that requires a minimum staffing of three, that we always have that three available to send out? And one of the concerns I have is obviously the four twenty nine has expanded and almost every other day, major accidents. And we're responding to it. Are we responding with enough staff or enough firefighters to deal with that, that accident? Because usually it involves two people or two vehicles and multiple people. And sometimes you have to use, what is it, the jaws of life? And then at the same time, you have to treat the patients. If you're sending a two man fire truck, and I keep saying fire truck, so apparatus. I mean, how do you decide who gets, who gets the, the, the medical attention? If there's a fire because of the accident, I mean, tho, those are things that I'm seeing when you're on the road. I mean, they shut down the roads and sometimes I see one fire truck out there and then the others are trying to get through the traffic.
Oh, yeah, certainly.
And I've seen that for our fire department.
We've had to send them from multiple stations.
The first, I, I feel that if we send out three to four, especially in major accidents, that we have enough staff to send out there, we can address the problem instead of standing there and waiting for a backup.
But that's what he's saying is by having a smaller truck, they can get there faster. So they're gonna meet the fire truck at the site. So having a pickup with two guys in it will get you there faster. And then when the fire truck gets there, then they, then now all of a sudden you've got four on the fire truck. That's what you need.
Okay.
So it's, it's getting somewhere even faster.
So that's, that's internal, that you're going to be doing that. We're not doing that because I've actually seen our fire truck go with two men in, in a major accident. And then I see the trucks coming afterwards, coming from different directions. And that's, that time is, is for me is so vital, not just for the people in the accident, but for our firefighters.
So probably if, if it's a major accident, we're sending, we have our heavy rescue, we have squads responding as well. So it depends on the severity of the accident is what, you know, what typically responds to those emergencies. Rollovers, different things like that, you know, dispatch queues those and looks at those. And we send, you know, different levels of response to those calls.
But, but is it not normal practice that when an engine goes, an ambulance goes with it?
It depends on the call. You know, there's, so something we're actually looking at and moving forward to starting August first is our pro QA. An, an update in dispatch where they actually look at the types of calls that were going on, even just talking about a medical call now. You know, typically throughout our entire history, we've sent a, a single ambulance on a certain type of response. Be it difficulty breathing, let's say. Well, now, based on those certain levels, there's Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta. On those questions that dispatcher is asking, they're gonna respond now with the appropriate response. So we might send now an engine and ambulance where before we'd sent an ambulance. On the flip side, if it's just a fire alarm that's going off, typically if it's a residential fire alarm, we just send one engine because it's an alarm. If we have some sort of cue that it's more than just an alarm, then we actually absolutely upgrade to a first alarm response or something like that. Does that make sense?
And, and so when you say squad, that's the pickup truck you were referring to earlier?
Yeah, squad one and squad five.
So, so what happens if there are two fires simultaneously at the same time?
Yep, then we're sending people everywhere. Yep, multiple.
Are we sending three man, uh, three man truck or are we sending two?
No, still two.
Still two.
And we have the manpower, we can still have this seventeen at both fires.
Uh, minimum manning per day is twenty nine. So, you know, it depends on how, you know, shakes out. I mean, that's something, we're looking, we're looking to grow, we're looking to improve.
Well, the bottom line is the effectiveness, you know, is getting the job done. It's not, is it more fun to have three than two? It's, is someone's life at stake? Are, are people going to be put in a difficult situation or are the people responding to going to be put in a difficult situation? And however we get there and arrive on the scene, do we have enough to adequately meet, adequately meet that without putting anyone at risk? Either our people or, or the people we're trying to help. Because if that's the standard, then that's the goal. Then we make the money follow that, you know, so we have to set it at that standard. If that's not being met, we have to change it because safety is the number one job. It really is, that's our number one responsibility. So, you know, that's what we need to understand, what is meeting that standard? And again, if, if we end up there arriving at the scene with enough people, however that happens, I'm not the expert. You know, you all, we, we're depending on you to tell us. If it's not there, if it's like, yeah, we really need to be there, then we need to know that and figure out a way to get us there. And then we can have something clear, you know, again, that's our, our goal, the effectiveness, not the cost to meet that effectiveness. And then we have to bridge that gap. I think that's what you're trying to say, we need to get here, so we need to start doing it now. And then we can know from that, that's where, you know, I was kind of saying, we, we have some real goals that we're gonna need to meet. And yes, thank God we have some healthy reserves and thank God we're more beyond this challenge that we faced in this last year, year and a half, that we can start doing this. So we need to know, okay, what are these mission critical things that we've been getting by, but we really need to be here? And we want to hit those goals.
Absolutely, you know, and that's, that's, again, this is an ongoing process that I want to start, starting with six this year. You know, a district chief and the three firefighters to continue as, as we get more growth and dense.
And we're in the same situation with our police department. So those are two big things that we, I think there is a willingness to focus on those things here in, in a way that, that is attainable and we can't just ignore. Because then two years down the road, when we are at those numbers, we're really gonna be behind.
And, and, you know, to give you the number I gave you before Commissioner Becker, you know, that, with that number, that's to hire forty five. When I, you know, projecting out because of the numbers we're gonna need, not just the people we're gonna need, but people have to have time off. You have to account for some of that stuff as well and, and all that comes into play. So it's a large number to get us what we're gonna need with growth and with, with the future as well.
Yeah, I mean, i- it's not as simple as just saying the per capita number, right? There's, there's multiple things that you have to consider. It's the per capita, it's the rate per, per miles because of just our geographic vastness. And then just what's the right operating model for the safety of both your staff and the residents? And, you know, and all three of those are different, you know, it's the same, it's the same conversation to drive all three. But I, I want to make sure that we're just set up to make sure that we have staff that feels like they're safe.
And what, what is the starting salary for a firefighter?
Uh, forty six, six.
So this one forty does not include benefits?
No, this is just salary. Benefits are a whole nother.
Is somewhere else in here?
About forty five percent. So you'll add additional forty five percent with pension and health insurance and everything else is about forty five.
And these are also, you know, this kind of explains, well, we did put in for the safer grant again this year. These, all these things you see on the wish list, we can't put into the budget yet because if we budget for them, then we lose the grant. If it's an opportunity for a grant, we'll make sure we explore that for us. So some of these things you'll see in here are going through a grant process right now. We have applied for the safer grant numerous times in the past as well and have been unsuccessful. Because again, if you look on, as, as they look at NFPA numbers and things like that, we're, we're, we're doing all right. You know, that's.
Staff pretty well.
And so you're saying that if we include some of these things in the budget now, then that disqualifies for the grant?
Are you at full staffing right now?
I'm sorry?
Are you at full staffing right now?
Uh, we have two vacancies, a lieutenant, a lieutenant and engineer just retired.
The money that the federal government is sending or the American Rescue Act money, does any of that include or, you know, to build for fire, not, not to build, but to bring staff up or?
I think there's a portion of it in there you can use for that, Commissioner.
Especially since our first responders were on the front line during COVID.
Correct, yeah, there are some, some of that, those dollars you can use for this, for these types of purposes. We're also looking, because as Chief said, we've, we've applied for a lot of grants. You'll see some other things that are coming up here too, that are some things to do with our stations, that we've applied for some grants. We're trying to wait, the timing is crazy right now because we just got awarded the money, we've applied for grants, it's budget time, but nobody's, we're not hearing anything, so we don't want to, we want to be careful because, you know, we've applied for grants and we want to see what, what's gonna happen with that. We're hoping to have, hear a lot of that before we get to the, the public hearings in September. So we'll know, hey, we got this grant, we didn't get this grant or, or, you know, our wish list items, our money from the Fed, the rescue money from the Feds, where we, where all we can put that. Because keep in mind, Brandon and I agree with you a hundred percent, public safety is, is number one. That's what we, we, that is, that, we do that right out of the chute. But you have some other needs that, that we've all been talking about, that we've, that everybody's been talking about from road resurfacing to lighting, which are also some safety things. Keep in mind that you also have those items that we have to fund. But, but with that being said, I, you know, and some of those dollars are, we've earmarked some of those dollars for that, for resurfacing. Because, you know, you guys have mentioned that that's some of your big priorities are resurfacing and lighting. So, but as you know, public safety is number one. So that's why we've applied for everything we can apply for and kind of gonna see what happens with that. We'll, and hopefully we'll know something before September, the end of September. And then we'll know which items that, you know, we will be able to use grant and which items we'll have to, we'll have to go to another source.
So I think as we're beginning to allocate the excess reserves that we do have, we need to keep in mind that should these grants not come through, we need to have enough there that we can put it this direction first.
That's why you have reserves.
And, you know, another, just our forward thinking and, and, you know, knowing that we have some of that planned in place. Another thing that's, you know, all of our stations, we have to worry, look at the infrastructure as well. Right now, all of our outlined stations are, are designed for the personnel they have there currently. And we'd have to look at, you know, expanding some of those bunker rooms and things like that. So, you know, a lot of this is, believe me, is in, in our thoughts, you know, things that moving forward. Part of that, another grant we put in for AFG this year is the fume vent exhaust systems. These are for the existing stations. I have high hopes this year for this, actually, it's something we put in for last year with COVID and all the monies they reallocated. You know, they, they took a lot of that back. But this is a specific, it's a direct so, a source capture system. That's specific as far as the grant goes and it's the safest way to do it. There are different types of products out there that attach directly to the exhaust system. This one's actually in-house, it attaches to the exhaust system. Once the apparatus starts and they leave the bay, it actually ejects automatically as they drive out. So it keeps the, some of that stuff down. So they put in for the grant, and again, a hundred twenty thousand dollars for that is what we want if we're, we are unsuccessful with the grant. And that's for five stations, six is gonna, it's gonna be built in with the station automatically, so it's gonna be with that.
So which fire station would you say absolutely needs a fume vent exhaust system?
All of them.
To include, when you say all of them, which ones?
One through six, all of them.
All of them? So why can't we build six with this in it?
That's, yes ma'am, that's what we're doing. Yeah, that's, that's, this is, this is for station one through five.
Five was not built with it?
That, we have a big exhaust fan that we added in that, but this, the actual specific fume vent system.
That's interesting that five didn't get that. Okay.
Did we say whether the three firefighters was included in the budget?
They are not because the chief has also applied for a grant for those positions as well. So we're waiting to hear from, from the safer grant.
Okay.
All right. Another thing we applied for with the grant, the fire prevention grant is a fire safety trailer. This is, actually we applied, this is a regional asset we partnered with a COE, Winter Park in Maitland, to put in for this grant together. With the COVID era, this is something that we can actually trailer around, take to different places, demonstrations. Our, our key kind of target in the program, we want to start, if there's a house fire in a certain area or a certain street, we want to take this out to that area and teach the people immediately after something's affected, that fire safety. This also allows the social distances and things like that, because we can kind of separate people throughout. So again, a grant we put in for, you can see the bottom picture there, it's actual mimics fires and things like that that laypeople can go in and practice on fire safety and things like that. That's a hundred and seventy one thousand dollars for that. Another thing, P, PEO or Public Education Officer will want a truck ramp. It's something we'll probably be able to squeeze out as well, but I just wanted to put it in here to make sure. Thermal imaging cameras, it's funny, you know, when they first came out, we probably couldn't have gotten a thermal imaging camera for double this cost. But now because of technology and things like that, we're actually gonna be able to replace all ten of our front run thermal imaging cameras for this amount. Technology's come so far and, and, you know, prices have calmed down for that. And it's good to update our technology every now and then, so that's something we put in for as well. These are the, again, thermal imaging cameras that the firefighters would take in to, to inside a fire and they're able to navigate a little bit easier.
And so you applied for a grant for that one as well?
No, sir.
Oh, so is this one in the budget?
This one currently is not. This is, this is a future list item that is.
This is in, this is, some of this stuff is in our CIP a few years down the road, but I'm still putting it on the wish list. Replacement recliners for station one and four, this is a lot of wear and tear of those different things. And again, having that number of personnel sitting in there each day, it's kind of something we need to.
How many recliners is that?
Station one is, how many are? Yeah, fourteen and then five at station four, so about twenty. Extrication, hydraulic extrication tool set, this is a full set of the jaws of life, something we just want to kind of get ahead of. We're, we're, we're doing good now, it's just something always to have if something goes out of service or something to replace it with. But that's about thirty four thousand in with our future trucks coming online, it's something we want to have in place for those.
And how many twos is that?
I'm sorry?
Is that just one?
That's all, a full set, so that's the cutter, the spreader and the ram, which is that telescoping place. And this, we've, we've actually gotten this from, through a firehouse subs grant, something we're gonna be pursuing in the near future as well. It's about time we can redo for that as well.
All right, so this is gonna be a grant request?
Next year.
Next year.
Right now it's here. Another thing, forcible entry door prop, this is something that we've built a couple of them now, but again, wear and tear and guys and girls just practicing on them, they do break a lot. This is a more resilient one for our training, we'd like down at the training center. And of course, as we mentioned before, three hundred dollars per firefighter for those fire related training courses outside of what we can offer here.
This, this is included.
This is included?
This is included.
I was gonna say, training I think is so important in, in, as a pilot, that's one of the reasons that pilots, because they pass a test and then they don't do it often, they can miss something simple and cost their life. And I think especially in this, we really need to make sure that, that everybody's getting the training they need.
Another thing we're asking for down at our training center is a Butler Building storage. We have our apparatus, eventually, once we get this new truck and things, we're not, we're not gonna get rid of anything. We're gonna use that a lot, our reserve, reserve, kind of as a training apparatus down at the training station. All of our hoses, hose testing equipment, things like that, we time that on purpose. But we want to make sure we have somewhere we can adequately store some of that stuff. So that would include the building itself and the cement work it would take to do that, so.
This is not included, this is in his, in his future plans, in his future five year plan.
The. Next, again, the second, district. Next, again, the second, District Chief Vehicle Gang with Charlie from Fleet. This is something that he goes, we can estimate we get for $50,000. This would include the backing, the striping, everything that comes with it, the radios, everything like that. And for something we're going to obviously ask for in just a few seconds. The replacement engine we talked about, Engine 11, replacing in 1998. We'll replace Engine 4 frontline. Very similar truck there. We actually established a apparatus committee this year to have a group of our guys and kind of look at what we think is, what they want out of a fire truck. Things they like, things they don't like, things like that. So moving forward this. Because it's going to be at Station 4, it is more of our industrial area, obviously, and with the airport and such, we wanted it to be more of a Class B foam, except the difference is Class B is more flame, I'm sorry, flammable liquids and things like that. So it's going to be a high-volume, high-foam capacity truck versus most of our regular trucks are A, which is normal house fire. They have the CAF systems and things like that, so. And some of the valves and things that certain people liked or didn't like, they had input on it. And so we were able to establish that, so.
Commissioners, this one is included in your budget. If you recall, we talked about this last year. They, you know, were able to get by with the one that they had, which I think he's going to take that one and put it into reserve, retire that one for the reserves. This will be the new one. This is in the budget. And if you recall, the Duke Energy monies that we received, we funded $300,000. You earmarked or designated $300,000. It will, it will be used to pay for a portion of this.
Then the next one you'll see, and it's the same picture, but this is actually requesting for Engine 51 replacements of 2001. Replace Engine 1 frontline. Again, forward thinking. It is a little bit higher priced, again, because of that CAFs system. And this price would include the truck, all the systems that come with it, and the equipment as well. So that, you know, is about $800,000 for that. EMS, again, kind of been hitting around it, but additional district chief position. Currently, right now, we have one district chief that is in charge of seven lieutenants. Span of control is something that's used in the fire service. Adequate numbers, anywhere between five and seven is your maximum span of control. Right now, we're at seven. Adding this, this district chief, obviously, is, would help with that span of control. Providing that safe operation, safety as well as the needs, redundancy in that position. If there is, we talked about two incidents, Commissioner, happening at the same time. Right now, we have one district chief. If we have two incidents now, we'll be able to send two. Currently, we also use what we call command support. They're off-duty personnel that take a vehicle home with them. They can respond from their home as long as they live within a certain parameter. But this, this position in particular would be a staffed on-shift position.
So who's your assistant fire chief?
Assistant?
Yeah.
We don't...
Oh, you don't have, we have the citizens, mayor, you're the fire chief, then you have an education officer. Do we have that?
That's Lieutenant Maynard.
Who?
Lieutenant Maynard, Jerry.
Oh, Jerry.
Yep.
And your assistant fire chief?
Assistant to the fire chief, that's Vicky Conasala.
Oh, that's right, Vicky. That's a civilian. I'm sorry, the receptionist. Then you have, all right, forget the receptionist, because I do know them, an edic, or division chief, EMS.
Yep.
Who's that?
Will Sanchez.
Just for my, the division chief suppression?
John Howe.
Who's John Howe? Is he here?
I don't think he is.
No. I always hear his name and I see him, but I never met him, okay? Division chief, life safety.
Chief Bowman.
Okay. And so you want to have a district chief underneath them?
Yes. That, additional. Right now, we have one. I want two, so we can spread out. So instead of having seven lieutenants under one, for now, we might have three under one and four under the other. As far as, as far as the chain of command and also response areas. Yeah, yeah, it's on shift.
Okay. It's interesting to see this. Okay.
So, and then some of this will maybe explain a little bit better. Right now, we currently, on shift, we have one per shift. So A shift is the entire 24-hour shift. Today is actually, today is, right? A C. Tomorrow will be A, the next day will be, you know, so 24-hour on, 48-off. So we have one district chief per shift for a total of three. We're asking now for six. Last year, we were looking at some, a type of program, we're looking at just to add one, but now we want three, just to, because we're growing. We know where it's getting there. The plus side of all this way, you know, to me, this is vitally important. You know, it's something we need in, in position. Supervisory roles, someone outside, you know, who's in command, different, you know. Having, having a strong command is, is safe, is as safe as you can get. Also, that second person, be able to augment that person as a safety officer, things like that. This, again, is just the span of control. And we need that for operational, our operational needs. Again, some of the roles, they play day-to-day operations, rosters, to control the time trades and personal time off, things like that. Respond to all major incidents within the city. They're the incident commander. Work with fleet maintenance. Administrative side, again, we're looking at them to do QAs of the reports, help assist that other position we've asked for. Prior shift follow-up, and, you know, they also want to support an alternate for District 1 on emergency calls. So if District 1's out, that District 2 can, if need be, can go over there and help, vice versa. And then, again, assisting us with projects and special duties, so. Again, the benefits, it increases our span of control during high-peak times, provides redundancy. I just said when other, other, the other district chief is out. Big thing is opportunity for advancement. It kind of pushes down. You mentioned before, you know, we have those division chiefs. I want this to go down to the boots on the ground, to provide that opportunity. I believe the last time we had a district chief test was well over a decade ago. You know, it's, we're trying to get that going and also increase our quality assurance program, so. And then to ask for that is 309, and that is just salaries. Big one, and again, I can't overemphasize this enough, training opportunity, paramedic program. I want to send nine of our guys and girls to the paramedic program. This year, we've had, you know, a lot of advancements. We've had a lot of our people move up into leadership roles, engineers and lieutenants. And, you know, the paramedics have moved up. You know, now when we hire someone new, they typically come in as a firefighter DMT. We, we had 120, over 120 people apply. We had four paramedics apply. And right now, that's kind of a, what we're seeing is a trend across, every fire chief I talk to, we just can't find medics, just can't find medics. So in my opinion, it's better to send our own people that we've known and vetted and trained through this program, make that investment. And that, kind of the programs we talked about before, you know, they'll sign a contract. And if we get this number, or even higher, we can do an in-house program as well. So something that's a little bit easier than we've done, done in the past, so. With that, I'm... I'm sorry?
It's out. That's not in right now, because that's not currently how we operate.
And what about the three district chiefs?
No, he has applied for a grant for that as well, so we're waiting to hear on that grant.
Are any of the chiefs that we have right now, can they be trained? Can they have an opportunity to become this district chief?
Well, any chief we have is a district chief already or above.
And none can be, none would qualify to take this role? Instead of bringing in another person?
Oh, no, that's, I'm sorry, the district chief would come from in-house. This would be a promotional process, kind of like a lieutenant tester. It's, it's the same. We wouldn't hire from outside.
Okay.
Yeah. There, in fact, of those 21 lieutenants we have, there's plenty who are qualified to test for that spot.
Okay. Is that in?
Yep.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Chief McKinley, you're up.
Can I take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Thank you. I gotta drink some water and get some, and prepare.
I gotta drink some water and get some and prepare.
Next up, we got Police Department Chief McKinley.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. A real quick overview for the past five years, the Apopka Police Department has looked at how to best police the city and tweak our budget. We have looked at technology to help us work smarter with the resources we have. We have also recognized the agency, reorganized the agency to try to be more efficient in the services we provide to the community. Based on the changes and measurements we monitor, we have submitted our budget and prepared a presentation to document our accomplishments, along with providing our needs and concerns as we move forward. Over the last several years, we've tried to prepare budget requests that were physically responsible and that addressed our needs to ensure the Apopka Police Department was well-trained and continued to provide a high level of service to our community. We have also managed our adopted budgets to ensure that we stayed within allocated funding. This year, we have submitted a budget request that we believe meets the safety requirements of our community, the operational needs of the Police Department to ensure our community is safe, while also ensuring we are physically responsible. Our budget proposal for this year is approximately, well, I'm gonna leave that out because I'm gonna have to go through some of our grant opportunities that we've applied for, so our budget may be a little bit different than what I had when I did my notes. The primary reason for the increase in this year's proposed budget is due to the need to address, add additional personnel in order to continue to provide the level of service to our community that they have come to expect. Our city has continued to grow over the past several, past four years, while the Police Department has not kept up with that growth. Making safety a priority, as the city continues to see rapid and increased growth, the safety of our community will always be a top concern of our residents. An investment in public safety fosters trust, gets people engaged in their communities, and supports economic activity. Public safety perceptions are used by community members to determine how safe they feel and in quality-of-life rankings. Places with lower crime rates are perceived as more desirable and attract visitors, businesses, new residents, and an increased talent pool. When people feel safe, they conduct business in their community, and they participate in local business, dining, and entertainment offerings. Public safety is a location factor for individuals looking to move into our community and for companies looking to invest in our community. Police Department accomplishments. This past year, as you know, was an extremely challenging year for the Apopka Police Department due to COVID-19 and events that occurred around the country. Unfortunately, those events that didn't reflect us did affect us. COVID-19 changed the way our communications center received and dispatched calls for service. It changed how our police officers responded to calls for service and interacted with victims, witnesses, and suspects. Events around the country, due to the events around the country, law enforcement faced challenges like we've never seen before. Law enforcement ties to our, to their communities were strained significantly over the past year. We faced presidential proclamations and legislative changes to the way we conduct business. We conducted Rite Training, Racial Intelligence Training, de-escalation training, and Fair and impartial training to ensure our personnel were trained and aware of the issues facing the police profession over the past year. Last year, we were awarded approximately $163,000 in grants, and we've applied for 10 officers in the 2021 COPS Hiring Grant that's gonna be worth approximately $700,000. COVID-19 significantly impacted our community policing efforts this past year. Even with the impact of COVID-19 on, had on the agency and our community, we are still able to complete our annual Shop With a Cop event. Once again, it was very successful, and we were able to provide a Christmas to 130 children over a five-day period. So, as you all know, we changed it from a one-day period to a five-day period. With that, I want to make sure that the men and women of the Apopka Police Department know that I'm proud and honored. I must say, I'm proud of all the members of the Apopka Police Department, the way they dealt with the adversities they faced last year. It has truly been an honor to work with each and every one of them. The Apopka population. This chart shows the consistent growth of the city over the past 16 years. The city continues to grow at a steady and fast rate. For example, from 2019 to 2020, the city grew by approximately 1,228 residents. Just this growth alone would have required adding an additional 2.56 officers just to maintain our current per capita. However, during this period, the Police Department did not receive any new authorized positions. Adding those officers would have maintained our per capita rate at 2.14, which, as you will see later in the presentation, would have still left us below the local agency per capita average of 2.39 officers per thousand. Without adding new officers to account for this growth, per capita, our per capita in just one year dropped from 2.14 officers per thousand residents to 2.09 officers per thousand. Apopka continues to grow. In 2010, there were 15,707 households in Apopka. In 2020, the number of households had increased to 19,920. This represents a 26.8% increase in the number of households. The 2010 consensus showed a population in Apopka of 41,542 residents. In April 2020, the City of Apopka's Community Development Department estimated the population of Apopka at 53,632 residents. This is an increase of 12,090 residents from 2010. This represents a 29.1% increase in our residential population in 10 years. This does not include commercial or industrial growth during the same period. Based on the increase in residents over this 10-year period, the Apopka Police Department should have hired approximately 26 officers just to maintain the 2.19 per capita we had in 2010. During this 10-year period, the Apopka Police Department has au, was authorized an additional 21 sworn positions, which has caused our per capita to drop to below the 2010 level. Currently, there are 7,270 dwelling units planned or under construction in the City of Apopka. This is up from 5,777 dwelling units planned or under construction last year when I did my presentation. Based on census estimates, there are now an average of three persons per household. This residential growth will add an estimated 21,810 residents to the City of Apopka over the next few years. This is up from an estimated 15,484 last year. In addition to the residential growth, there's approximately 11 million square foot of industrial and commercial growth planned on, or under construction. This is up from an estimated 3 million from last year. Over the past couple of years, the city has modified the future land use in several areas of the city to allow for denser growth. As a result, we are experiencing an increase in apartment complexes and townhomes. All of this growth is going to continue to tax the already limited resources of the Apopka Police Department, if not planned for appropriately and addressed soon. This shows our authorized positions since 2007 fiscal year. As you can see, the growth of the Police Department has been nominal compared to the population and square mile growth of the city. Since FY '16, we have only added four officers to the Police Department. However, with growth over the same time, we should have had, should have added at least nine to maintain our per, per capita. If you recall, the four that we did add were due to the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Act and the fact that we had to put four SROs in the schools. So therefore, our patrol, our CID units did not increase at all, which are primarily the ones providing service to our community. This chart shows the ratio of officers per thousand residents for many of the local agent and for, law enforcement agencies. The state average for police departments continues to be 2.43 officers per 1,000, and the local average of the listed agencies is 2.39. The local average is about the same as the state average. Due to the city's growth, in 2020, the Apopka Police Department fell from a per capita of 2.14 in 2019 to 2.09 officers per 1,000 residents in 2020. This equates to a drop of three officers in our per capita in just one year. As the graph shows, we continue to be below the state and local average of officers per capita. This chart shows the Apopka Police Department's officers per thousand residents over the last 14 years. As you can see, our current per capita is lower than it was in 2007 and will fall even lower with the planned growth if no officers are added in the next fiscal year. In fact, we now have reached the lowest per capita, other than tying 2018, than we've seen in the last 14 years. This year, our per capita has dropped from 2.14 officers per 1,000 to 2.09, as I mentioned. Again, this does not seem significant until you look at the actual officers needed to just reach the state average. To reach the state average of 2.43 officers per thousand residents, the Apopka Police Department should have 130 authorized sworn law enforcement positions. Last year, it was 126. Due to growth, that's increased. We currently have 112 authorized sworn positions. To reach the state average, we now need to hire an additional 18 police officers.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify that point, cuz I misread it the first time. So, last year, it was 126. That, to get to the 2.43, not that we had 126.
No, it was.
Right.
We needed 126 in my budget presentation last year to get to the 2.43 officers per thousand. Now, we're up to needing 130 authorized positions. To reach a local municipality average of 2.39 officers per thousand residents, the Apopka Police Department would need 128 authorized sworn law enforcement positions. Last year, it was 125 that we would have needed. Again, we are currently authorized 112 sworn positions. Just to reach a local agency average, we need to hire an additional 16 police officers. This puts the Apopka Police Department behind in the number of personnel needed to continue to provide at least the current level of service we provide to our community. If we do not add any police officers this fiscal year, we will fall even further behind, and the service we are able to provide to our community will suffer. As we look at other metrics, other than just per capita, as we mentioned with the Fire Department, we must look at other metrics. And in this case, we looked at our officers per square mile like we did last year. To this point in the presentation, we've addressed the per capita. When looking at the need for additional sworn positions, we can't just look at the, that one data set. It is also important that we look at the error of responsibility of the Police Department. The City of Apopka spans over 35 square miles now. This chart shows a comparison of the square miles for several local cities. The average square miles for the cities listed is 21.87. As you can see, at 35.5 square miles, we have the third-largest service area in the area. This slide shows how many officers each city has per square mile. The average number of officers per square mile for those cities listed is 5.16. As noted on the screen, the cities of Altamont Springs, Windermere, New Smyrna, and Leesburg were removed from this chart because they were outliers in their numbers. As you can see, in addition to the one of the lowest, in addition to one of the lowest per capitas in the area, we also have the second-lowest officer-per-square-mile ratio for the agencies listed. We discussed officer safety for the Fire Department for a little bit there and what they had on the engine. This is a significant officer safety issue for the men and women of the Apopka Police Department. They're covering a lot of square miles, they're in a car by themselves, and it does take a while for their backup to get there to assist them. Or depending on the call, they're gonna wait for their backup to get there before they can respond to assist a resident. It's only the safe way to handle things. The challenge facing the Apopka Police Department is not, just not the population growth, but the sprawling growth of the city. The Apopka Police Department has an average of 3.15 officers per square mile, down from last year of 3.2, while the average officers per square mile in the local law enforcement agencies is 5.16. The average area covered by the agencies is 21.87 square miles, as I mentioned, and they have an average of 109.9 officers to cover that 21.87 square miles. The Apopka Police Department is required to cover 35.5 mile, square miles with 112 police officers. This lack of sufficient personnel is affecting our response times to some parts of the city, and at the city, and as the city continues to expand, our response times and level of service to our community will continue to be affected. When looking at our manpower needs, it is important that we take into consideration what our city looks like and how big it is becoming not just our per capita numbers. Looking at the officers per square mile shows how we also need to be able to provide services to all areas of the city. Our response times, as you can see, this slide compares our response times from 2019 to 2020 for each priority call for service. If you're not familiar with it, Priority 1 is our emergency calls for service. Priority 2, there's low numbers there, that's usually because they're wrapped into Priority 1 numbers, and then Priority 3 is not lights and sirens are not a priority, it's just we get there as we can get there. Due to COVID, our dispatch calls for service last year did go down by approximately 12%. One reason for the decrease is dispatch calls, in the dispatch calls, was due to COVID and the shift in the way we did business. Due to COVID, we began handling some of the calls over the phone instead of dispatching a police officer. As you can see, the response times for Priority 1 and 2 increased last year, even though our calls for service decreased. Our Priority 3 response times were down slightly from the previous year. Unfortunately, due to the continued low staffing levels and the increase in the size of our city, our response times for emergency and priority calls for service continued to increase. They increased the year before also. To address this short, to address this problem short-term, we are in the process of increasing our minimum staffing for each shift. We've already changed our policy requiring more people on shift. That's only a short-term fix, because what it's gonna do is it's gonna limit time-off requests, and it's gonna limit training opportunities for the officers, because we're gonna have them working out on the road instead. This slide shows our dispatch calls for service by zone, and it shows that our response time for priority calls for service increased again last year in four of our five patrol zones. As we will see in the next section of the presentation, we continue to spend a lot of time addressing crime in the CRA, which requires our officers to be concentrated more towards downtown. This increases their response times to the outlying areas of the city. As you all are well aware, the CRA covers approximately one square mile of the city. Violent crime in the CRA was slightly down again in 2020, so that's two years in a row that we've been able to address some of the violent crime in the CRA area, and it has dropped. This marks the second year in a row that it's been down. The CRA is approximately one square mile, 633 acres, and houses less than 5% of the city's residents. Although CRA accounts for a very small portion of the city, it accounts for 28% of our violent crime. That is down from 31% in 2019. So again, there is some good news, we are working on our crime, violent crime in the CRA area. Property crimes in the CRA were also down slightly in 2020. However, the CRA still accounted for 18% of the property crimes that occurred across the City of Apopka. When you look at both violent crimes and property crimes, the one square mile of the CRA continues to account for 19% of the crime in the city, but overall accounts for less than 1% of the city. Our uniform crime reporting for last year shows that violent crime in the city was up in 2020 by an additional 42 crimes, which equates to a 20% increase. Apopka is not, was not isolated from what occurs around the country, and unfortunately, we have all probably seen or heard that violent crime rose across the entire country last year. Unfortunately, this trend is continuing this year. Currently driving our numbers is theft by sudden snatching, which, under Florida statutes, is a robbery. On a positive note, our crimes against persons is currently trending down from last year's numbers. Property crimes were down by 28% in 2020, or 536 total crimes. The decrease in property crimes can be partly attributed to the fact that people remained at home during the pandemic, which reduced a lot of our property crimes, our residential burglaries, and our auto burglaries. Overall, as indicated on the slide, crime in Apopka was down 23.1% in 2020. Another measurement that we use is our calls for service for our comm center. This shows the 911 calls for service handled by the Apopka Police Department's Communication Center compared to other agencies. Currently, our dispatchers dispatch calls for service, answer calls for service, and handle teletype duties for Apopka, for the Apopka Police Department, Fire Department, Maitland, and Eatonville. Agencies such as OPD and OCSO have the ability to have personnel assigned to specific functions, such as call-taking, dispatching, and teletype operators, due to the number of personnel and the way their communication center operates. For multi-agency PSCs, the Apopka Communication Center answers a higher volume of 911 calls per employee than the other two multi-agency PSCs, which is Winter Garden and Winter Park. With the current staffing, we have 26 communication technicians and one manager. When everyone is at a station, we have the ability to have personnel dispatch, handle teletype duties while, excuse me, while having one call taker, and the supervisor is free to oversee the communication center and assist where needed. When someone utilizes a PTO day or calls in sick, which occurs almost daily, the supervisor has to take a position and is not available to supervise or assist a dispatcher, call taker during a critical, excuse me, critical incident. With our current staffing, personnel cannot leave the communication center, take a lunch break, and they eat at their stations. This slide shows the service, calls for service into the communication center over the past five years. Until the onset of COVID-19, the calls for service handled by the Apopka Communication Center were continuing to increase. As COVID-19 subsides, and with the growth of the city, we anticipate this trend to resume. This slide shows calls received in the communication center for the Apopka Fire Department and public services. I think what a lot of people don't realize is, is when public services goes home around 5 o'clock, their calls go into the comm center, so that they can handle and dispatch whatever public services may be need. It's a water line, water main break, or something like that. We get a lot of calls for, my water got turned off during the day and, and other things, but, so their call volume, when some of the city's services decreases, closes, increases at our comm center. As you can see, the calls for service also declined during the pandemic, but can be expected to rise as we recover from the pandemic. I was asked to, uh...
Let me just ask you, do you have a number of after 5, where you said these emergency calls now go through the comm center? How many of those calls come in after 5?
I don't know the exact number. I know that a couple of years ago, we did incorporate an answering service to a lot of the services, so that they do go to voicemail now, but there are certain services that still route to the comm center. We did significantly reduce that number, but there is still a good percentage, I mean, I'm sorry, it might be on the slide, to be honest with you. Let me figure out how to go backwards here. Public service calls into the comm center in 2018 was 1,000, 2019, 1,100, and last year was 932.
And what do we do with those calls?
Depending on what the call for service is, we will call the on-call person to come out and address it. Traffic light out, like I said, a water main break, or something like that. If it's not, then we'll refer them to call back during business hours.
So, we're actually taking a communication dispatcher to now handle these calls, and then it's up to them to call whoever on-call?
Well, I don't know that we're telling them to do that. Who's the only business in, who's the only city function that's here 24 hours a day, seven days a week? So, who's everybody gonna call?
Yeah, the 911.
You know, sometimes what we don't feel is a crisis is a crisis to somebody, and they use 911 for that service, so obviously, we're gonna treat them like it is a crisis, and we're gonna try to help them in any way we can. I don't see any way of us not encouraging someone to call 911. Obviously, you were in the business for a long time. I always use my situation of, you know, and this is what I tell the police officers. When somebody calls 911, to them, they're in a crisis. To them, everything's stopped. They don't know what to do, so they've called the Police Department. That includes the call that we get quite often during school of, my seven-year-old won't go to school. Most of us, make your seven-year-old go to school, but to them, they're in a crisis. So, we're gonna go help them and see what we can do to intervene in that family crisis and help them. So, you know, I quoted the same with public services. To them, if they've lost a public service after 5 o'clock, they're probably gonna call 911 and see what the problem is. So, we've done a lot of things to mitigate that, like I said, by putting phone answering services on a lot of the offices down at public services, so that they can leave a message, if that's what they choose to do. How we get past that, other than that, to stop people from calling 911, I don't think we're gonna be able to do it. So, it is, and I'm not, I'm sure it's not unique to the City of Apopka.
No, I know that, I know that.
An overview of our vehicle situation. Overall, we are pretty good in our vehicles with the Police Department. Currently, the Police Department has 160 vehicles in its fleet. These vehicles include marked patrol cars, unmarked vehicles, and special vehicles such as the MRAP and Citizen on Patrol vehicles. Last year, we ordered 13 2021 vehicles under the budget. Unfortunately, 10 of them haven't been delivered because they're sitting there waiting for their chips. So, we are a little bit behind on getting our vehicles. The next few slides just show you some of the cars, what the mileage is on our vehicles, what type of vehicles we have. Again, the majority of our fleet is our Explorers, Interceptors, and various unmarked vehicles.
I don't have that slide.
As you can see, we have vehicles in our fleet from 1994 to 2021. Overall, our fleet is in pretty good shape. Vehicles are replaced based on several factors. We don't just replace them by year. Some of our vehicles, like our Canine vehicles, they're running all the time. They have to run with the dogs in them, so they're getting a lot of idling hours on them, which affects the engine and their performance. We have found that it looks like we're going to be able to keep most of our patrol vehicles, as long as they don't have any, you know, inherent defects in them, for about eight years. With our current fleet, that means we're going to have to replace about 19 vehicles a year. Some of that's going to come. Like if we do hire 10 officers this year, and we hire 10, and we purchase 10 vehicles in addition to the 11 or 12 we're asking for this year, that's going to bring us to a big year. It may not, because sometimes each car gets, reaches mileage. We're not just looking at, at the year. We're looking at the mileage of the vehicle. We're looking at the maintenance records. We talk to Charlie before we start deciding how to order them, because we may have a car with 130,000 miles that's out there performing really well, and we may have one at 103,000 miles that's down at fleet every other weekend, and it's time to get rid of that one before we get rid of the other one, and then we'll cycle the other one out. So we do look at several different things before we decide which vehicles we're going to. That's why you see such a wide discrepancy. You know, we may be replacing 2013 this year, and you may wonder, well, why do we still have the 2009? Well, because it's been in better shape, and it's not down at fleet all the time. And there's some vehicles, Charlie will call and say, you really need to get rid of this thing. You know, it's costing him more money to maintain it than it is for us to hang on to it, so. So our 2122 budget request. As mentioned, we have applied for the COPS grant. It was announced on May 7, 2021. That's really late for it to come out. Dr. Jackson and Lieutenant Wartman worked collectively, collaboratively, to complete the grant solicitation. The request was to receive funding for 10 additional law enforcement officers. If received, the COPS grant will provide up to 75% of the approved entry-level salaries and fringe benefits, which is approximately $76,000 a year with fringe benefits of full-time officers for a three-year period. This is a minute, there is a minimum 25% match of the local, of the grant from the local community. The grant period is actually for five years. That'll allow us time to hire those officers during the grant period and recoup our grant money for them. Since the grant solicitation came out so late this year, there's a strong possibility that we will not know if we receive the grant funding until after you have approved the 2122 fiscal year budget. So that brings us to the quagmire in my budget, because I do have the personnel in the budget. They're not funded as we wait for this grant to decide whether we get it. The last I heard is they're looking at September 30, probably before they make the awards for the COPS grant. So that's going to be past the time that you all are going to approve our fiscal year. So what I'm asking you to keep in mind is the fact that we may have to revisit this if we don't get all 10, or we don't get any through the COPS grant, because right now it is not budgeted in my budget. So field services, again, the biggest, and this is the biggest part of our budget increase, 10 new police officer positions. Like I said, in 2019, the police officer, police department was authorized for additional positions. Those went to SRO positions and did not fill up our, increase our patrol responsibilities. They'll assist in keeping with residential and commercial population increase. As I mentioned, there's a lot of growth going on. They'll assist with the need to improve our per capita numbers, to be closer and in line with the state average, to increase the officer-per-square-miles ratio to assist in covering the 35 and 1/2 square miles of the city. They'll ensure the police department continues to provide at least the same level of service to our community it currently provides. Again, funding for these have been requested through the COPS office. My only caution again is that if we don't get them, then we're going to have to revisit that $760,000 funding to provide police officers. You have a question, Commissioner Becker?
No. Not a question. Just if we think about it, if we do get the COPS grant, we'd still have to budget for 25%, assuming that we hired all 10 within the fiscal year.
Yes, sir. And the equip, their equipment and the vehicles are budgeted-
Right.
-in the budget. So that's covered. We can't budget for the officers, because if we got the grant, then it'd be supplanting. So, you know, we're just going to have to see where we go from there.
Let me ask you a question. Is the police department rated the same way like the fire department, you know, as far as service, you know?
No, ma'am. There is not an ISO rating or anything like that.
No, yeah.
I mean, obviously, we are accredited. We've maintained our accreditation for the last four years now, which we're very proud of. We are keeping up with best practices, and as I mentioned earlier, you know, we had some law enforcement face some big challenges. We immediately brought the training we needed to our officers to make sure they were able to understand some of the challenges faced with racial profiling and other things that went on around the country. So, you know, we're fortunate, but no, there isn't anything that goes out like the ISO rating. I think that obviously, one of the factors we look at is how, to me, is how safe our residents feel. And I think overall, most of the communication I have with our residents is they currently feel safe in the city of Apopka. But we do have to address our lack of police officers in this city. Did I answer your question? As best I could.
Yeah. And what about our response time to the calls? How is that-
Well, as I mentioned-
Measured, yeah.
It's going up. We take it from the time the call comes into the comm center to the time the officer arrives at the scene. And again, because we are spending a lot of concentrated time in the area around City Hall, the downtown area, the CRA area, it makes our response time out down to Sheeler, down to the hospital, and up north to the Kelly Park area that's, you know, we all know is getting ready to explode, is exploding as we speak. It's becoming a challenge. And on top of that, as we talked about, it's becoming a big challenge for officer safety. You know, I can't have an officer out there at Kelly Park, you know, going to a violent call. You know, obviously, they're going to. That's what we get paid for. That's what they signed on for. If there's something significant happening and they have to go, they're going to go by themselves. I have no question, no doubt, that every police officer in the Apopka Police Department will respond by themselves if they have to. If we can make it safer for the people that were responding to a help and our officers, they're going to try to wait for somebody to be there to help them.
I always find that the domestic calls are the most dangerous for our officers.
There's, unfortunately, the last statistic I saw from the Law Enforcement Officer Memorial page is we are on rate, we are already on pace to significantly break the law enforcement officers killed in 2021 already.
I follow that same page.
So we're already on a very bad track to significantly beat what happened last year.
I follow that page.
That's okay. For field services, again, patrol vehicles, seven patrol vehicles to replace older vehicles in the fleet, and then the 10 patrol vehicles for the 10 officers requested in the COPS grant, that money is in the budget. Body cameras. We have applied for a grant, a one-to-one match for body cameras. We didn't think we qualified, so we actually wrote, Lieutenant Wartman wrote the federal government, asked them if we would qualify, because the way the grant is written, it was a little subjective. We already have a body-worn camera program. It looked like it was to provide agencies that didn't have one, but they did respond and say, as long as we're improving our technology, we qualify for the grant. So we did submit for the grant, and it was submitted a couple of days ago, so it's in there. We are going to improve our technology. That's one of the reasons we need new body cameras. Our current body cameras have not kept up with technology. They don't auto-activate some of the new cameras. When you get out of your car, the camera comes on. When you turn on your lights, the camera comes on. Ours don't have that capability. They also have the capability of group activate. When more than one police officer is together, their body cameras will come on. These are all things that we can adjust and, and shift to meet our needs, but our current body camera doesn't even have those. Currently, we're having a problem importing into evidence programs, so we have a secondary program that takes it from the body camera to put it into our evidence program. The newer technology should be more seamless, and we are working closely with the IT department to make sure whatever we do tries to eliminate some of the programs we have that's, we shouldn't have to have, but because of the technology of our body cameras, we do have. Our uniform clips, we break about 10 of them a month for some reason. They're not very sturdy. The company did just ship us some for free this last time upon us complaining about them. Our current body cameras only have a 30-second pre-record option. There are more cameras out there with a longer backup period, so if the camera wasn't activated, it's still recording, and you have up to a minute or so before you turn it on, it's still being recorded by the camera behind the scenes. We've also had problems with the night recording. It's blurry. It's difficult to see in low-light conditions on our current cameras. So we've had technical issues. This is our biggest, one of our biggest problems, downloading. The software isn't working properly sometimes, and so when the officer goes to get their camera, the storage is full. That's not doing any of us any good, because we know in today's environment, we need those body cameras working, and we need them to record every interaction that they have with the community so that they can show that, you know, what occurred on that scene if we need to. And as I mentioned, we've applied for a federal grant to assist with the funding. It's a one-to-one match. I think our part of it, we put in for approximately $200,000. Body cameras come usually in a three-to-five-year program. The first year is more upfront, and then after that, it comes down to about $130,000 a year, depending on what we decide to do. And in consultation with Mr. Hippler in the IT department, we would like to go to a cloud storage with our body-worn cameras, so it is a little bit more expensive as far as the program goes for the police department, but it will save some money in the IT department, because they're not going to have to continually buy servers, backup tapes, and everything else required, and it's not in our network, so, you know.
So when they, they come in at the end of their day with the, with their body camera, what do they do with that?
They put them in a docking station, and it downloads to servers in the IT department. Now, with the new technology, they could have docking stations, depending on which direction we want to go. We could allow them to have docking stations at home. We could allow them to put a dock, the docking station in their car, so they don't have to come back and dock that. They don't have to come when they're going to work an off-duty job to get their body camera. Or we can continue to have docking stations at the police department, but that'll be, you know, a decision we'll make as we decide what program to go with.
So when they come in and they put their camera in the docking station, they leave it there, and then when they come back-
On duty, they take it again.
Then they have to pick it up again?
It's downloaded, and the battery is charged.
Oh, okay.
So it's ready to go for the day.
How long does that take for them to download the-
It depends on how much it was activated that day.
Okay.
You know, I have no earthly idea.
So they actually turn it on and turn it off?
I'm sorry?
The officer actually turns it on and turns it off themselves?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. If they're having interaction with the community, unless it's a, there's some discrepancy in the pol, not discrepancy, but some opportunities in the policy. If they're talking to a confidential informant, they don't have to have it on, because they're not going to talk on body camera. If they're, you know, talking to a victim of a certain type of crime, they may not turn it on, because they may not feel comfortable being recorded as they disclose what occurred to them and stuff like that. We have a very detailed policy, but for the most part, when they have a interaction with the community, they're supposed to have their body cameras on. Tasers. Our tasers are not included in the budget, however, we do have to consider that in December of 2021, what I like to call is the fleecing of America happens, and that is that some of these devices expire. They still will function. We will not carry the liability insurance that the manufacturer currently provides us. They're just like bulletproof vests. You know, they have an expiration date now, although when we turn in our bulletproof vest, they usually sell them to some underprivileged community or company, country, and they use the bulletproof vest. It's the way it is. We're putting life expectancy on everything, because then you have to buy it more often. So they are not in the budget, but we will make a management decision as to whether or not we want to replace them and go with the new version of the Taser that just came out, so.
What's the expiration on a bulletproof vest?
Five years. Taser's five years. Five years is a magic number in law enforcement.
Do we have any right now-
Everything seems to expire in five years.
Do we have any that are, any of the officers right now wearing expired bulletproof vests?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Thank you.
It's not going to happen. We do have, usually have a $25,000 grant from the state to help purchase a bulletproof vest, but we've also given the officers now an option with the vest. There's a new vest out that's a little bit thicker than the ones we're currently issuing. This is a very comfortable, high-threat level vest, but now they've made one that has a ceramic plate in it that's only about that thick. It was, I think, $200 more for a front plate, so I've authorized, because we did have the funding, that those officers, a little bit thicker vest, too. If they want to go to that setup, they can have that choice, or they can continue to wear the vest like I wear currently. So we are giving them some options as to what kind of protection they want. That ceramic plate has really taken the place of, they still have them, and we have them in our inventory, we bought them with grants, but several years ago, maybe four or five years ago, we bought the big steel plates in carriers. They're about 30 pounds. They're heavy. It's all you can do sometimes to get it out of your trunk, which is a deterrent to some of them using them when they need to use them also as an active shooter kit or whatever. So I think that this will help take some of that off of that. We'll continue to, if we do have an active shooter, issue them the solid steel plates. They're, like I said, they're heavy, they're hot, but they do have that option, too, because obviously, their safety is what's priority for us. We are purchasing three new in-car camera systems, but in the big scheme of everything that I just mentioned, that's insignificant, to be honest with you, so. Support services. We are requesting one code enforcement officer. We haven't hired a code enforcement officer since 2006. Since we hired our last one, the city has grown by more than 16,000 residents. We are doing a significant amount of cases, going to hearings and foreclosures. So some of the cost of the officer, I don't know if it'll cover his entire salary, will be recovered, and some of the fines that, you know, they'll go out and be levied against some of the residents for code enforcement violations, foreclosures, and, and whatever we choose to do. Can't give you that amount, because sometimes, you know, we work with the homeowner to negotiate, fix the problem, and the fines will be reduced and everything else, but there will be some income as we are able to look at more areas of the city. And I think it's very important that, you know, we want to keep the city looking as nice as we can. We fall behind in this area, we're probably never catching up. Nothing against the county, but, you know, you don't get a lot of response very quickly from their code enforcement. Our two code enforcement officers are very responsive to the needs of the city and our community, and they respond out there and handle what they need to handle, and work very closely with our community to make sure that they come in compliance without having to get to the fines and other things, and I think the intrinsic value of that outweighs itself, too, so. School resource officer. We are asking that one of our positions be upgraded to a corporal with the new K-8 school going on Jason Dwelly. That will bring our SRO unit to nine plus a sergeant. A span of control, as was mentioned by the fire department. If our sergeant's off, we don't have a supervisor there. It relies on the sergeant that's on patrol. I'd rather have a corporal in that position so that they can bounce from school to school if they need to, and that we can ensure that proper supervision of our SROs is accomplished.
So we have nine right now, SROs? How many SROs do we have?
We have nine, with the sergeant.
With the sergeant?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, for support services, we're requesting four unmarked CID vehicles. There'll be replacements for vehicles with an average of 106,000 miles on them. Communications. I went over our communication statistics. Although they were down, we anticipate they will continue to increase. We are requesting two additional communications technicians. They are on our wish list. I would like them to be seriously considered, because again, right now, our communications personnel are in there for 12 hours. Somebody leaves, or they Uber lunch to them, bring lunch in, they eat at their console. That's not good for any of us. We know that we're told to get up from our desk, and I'm probably as guilty as anybody in the world. I don't leave my desk for lunch either, and I probably should, but they're in a room with no sunlight, no access to the outside for 12 hours a day. They should at least be able to, you know, walk outside and enjoy some fresh air and everything else. In addition to that, our supervisors are normally on a console, and if we have a critical incident in the city, they are tied up on a console. They are not able to break from that console to assist the dispatcher that may need assistance with ensuring that their proper units are being responded to, that they're there and available to listen to the officers when they need it, or the fire department in this case, or Maitland or- or the fire department in this case, or Maitland, or the Eatonville Police Department. So we are authori, requesting that we get two new communications technicians. It'll be extremely important if we get the 10 additional police positions. As noted in the beginning of our budget request, is up from last year. This increase is due to the need for additional personnel. At this time, I can go through our budget page by page if you'd like me to. Most of it is pretty flat. I think I, if you looked at my budget, I've noted in great, big, bold, red letters what changes were there. I don't think there's anything shocking that really went up. We did increase our training budgets because we do believe that we're going to need training, continuing to evolve with law enforcement and the needs and things that are changing in the law enforcement world right now. With the growth of our city, we have to recognize the need to add additional sworn and civilian personnel to ensure we provide the same level of service to the community that they've come to expect. Now, with that, I'll answer any questions, and I thank you for your time.
Any questions?
No, I'm just very in, in strong support of this. Obviously, we need to make sure that if the grants do not come in, we can make up that difference because this, to me, is the, is the bedrock, everything that we do. And I think we have a fantastic department. I think you guys have done a tremendous job, especially in the climate that's been out there. I know that you're already ahead of all the different things that we've faced in, in our society, already dealing with those things. So we need to make sure that we stand behind you and that we're funded, and we've got to get ahead of this curve, or it's, it could get bad fast, so.
We are, we have to do something pretty soon. Or we are going to be in a position. You know, you think just at our growth of about 1,200 people per year, we're looking at hiring a little over two officers every year just to maintain what we have right now. If we want to catch up to the 2.39 or 2.43, you know, and to me, that's not the scariest, our per capita is not as scary as our officers per square mile to me because we're leaving parts of the community unprotected with a longer response time. But it's also an officer safety issue for our officers. They're required, they're waiting longer for their backup to get there if they, you know, just happen to be out in, you know, if they answered a call up off Kelly Park and an emergency call goes out there. But everybody, you know, right now, when we have a fatal accident in the city, just about everybody is on that fatal accident.
Mm-hmm.
That's what it takes, so.
Any other questions?
The only, the last question I meant to ask on your last slide, so, and you answered it in the, in the bullet. So the two people in the comm center, that staffing would then alleviate the supervisor to focus fully, and that would kind of isolate against PTO or sick time coming in. As long as, if you had those two additional, that would kind of protect you against those scenarios?
For most occasions. I mean, you always have the day that two people may call in. You have the day that, you know, obviously, we can manage the PTO and the vacation, but we can't manage the sick. Staffing comm centers right now, as well as staffing law enforcement is a challenge. The Orange County Sheriff's Office actually just sent out a survey to all the agencies wanting to know what they were doing about staffing in their comm centers because it's across the board. We just had two leave because they found work-at-home jobs. A lot of people have gone through the pandemic working at home. That's a great alternative, a great offering. So we're having to overcome that. We've had some law enforcement officers just retire because of the climate. You know, they would like to police like we did 15 years ago. Maybe wouldn't we all, but that, that ship sailed. We have to police the way our community expects us to police and the way the country expects us to police. So, you know, we do face some challenges with hiring, and I'm not going to kid anybody, I think everybody knows that. It's not just to us, it's to every law enforcement agency, it's, um...
Yeah, but in a high-pressure environment like that, and to your point, just the working conditions of being, you know, windowless environment and just being inside that entire time for a 12-hour shift. I mean, you want to provide as much downtime disconnect as possible, so we support that.
Well, that's one of the things that, you know, I will give you an update real quick on the public safety building. We did, you know, get the contract that you all approved and everything. I have had contact because Mr. Bass made me the project manager. I found that out in an email, by the way. So we have been in communication with them. They've sent us their questionnaires for each one of the departments. And that'll be a good opportunity to bring our comm center into the 20th century, you know, because there's ergonomically correct desk. There's some exercise things they can be able to do while they're sitting there, be more, a little bit freer from, you know, not tethered to their thing. They're not tethered right now. We do have wireless headphones, but they can't leave, leave the area, and there's a lot of things we can do. I mean, obviously, it's not worth our investment if we're going to move to a new building to spend a million dollars or so to bring in new desks and things right now. We have asked for a new computer, terminal for the comm center. It is transferable. I did make sure of that to the new comm center so we won't be spending $60,000 that, you know, we won't need in two years. It is transferable to the new comm center.
Other than that, I thought it was a great presentation, so thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Great job. I support the police department. Think we have one of the finest there's in the country, and our community also supports you as well and appreciate all that you and, and your visibility. So we thank you.
Thank you, and we know that the community supports us, and we appreciate that.
Mr. Floskis?
Well, you know me. I absolutely love first responders, especially the police department.
At least I didn't lose any, use any acronyms you didn't know.
Yeah. I know, I ask for every acronym with the fire department. But, you know, at the same time, you know, we have people who are tuning in, and so sometimes the acronyms go right over their head, they don't understand it.
Well, I understand.
But, you know, I, I'm kind of on the same note. We, we know that the law enforcement agencies across the country are, are meeting so many challenges. And time and time again, I, I see your department, see our police officers always meeting the challenge. And whatever we can do to, to really strengthen our police department, I'm, I'm all in support of that. And you are right, because I know a one-man patrol by itself in today's age, I still can't believe that it's still going on because I come from patrol where it was always a two-man patrol. And, you know, in our response time, we always had a backup. Here, I see that there's one police officer. By the time he has to wait for a backup, especially if you already know the call that you're responding to requires that backup, it changes the dynamics of a, of a family dispute, or it, it just changes. So absolutely, I'm on board. And unfortunately, like Ed said, the grant, the budget, the American Rescue Act, I mean, we have this whole combination going on. But the one thing I do want to assure our chief is that if this grant does not come in, that we will put some funds on the side to hire the extra police officers because that's very important. All right.
And we do appreciate your support, but I do want to clarify one thing. I'm, I'm just a figurehead. They somehow make me look very good, but it's all them that are out there doing the work, and I do appreciate everything they do.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Mayor, let me, I just want to make a couple comments real quick because we were talking about with fire, what's in, what's out. I will tell you that the, the budget currently, three, the three positions are in. The code enforcement officer is in, and the two communication dispatch positions are fully funded.
Okay.
Currently, so everything that you've seen, everything in the chief's is pretty much funded, other than we're waiting on the cops grant and the, the grant for the, for the body cameras. And then, of course, the tasers will be an issue that we'll have to address, too, when we get to that. So I think it's important you see that. And I think the other thing I want to point out that we've worked through is, if you've noticed from these two presentations with, between the fire and police, is that the fire has a rating system. They have an ISO. They have, we have the top rating, and so they have something to benchmark against or to go against. It's, it's tougher for the police department, they don't really have that. But, but you can see by this that, that fire is, the response times are still good, really good response times, they're still getting to the, to the scenes and everything. Their response times haven't changed, whereas you can see with the, with the police department, you've seen the, the actual drop in the response time. So I think that's critical that, that, you know, we focus on that, too, while we look at everything, because I think that's very, very critical. It's all about response time, as you know, so.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Chief. Mr. Hippler, last but not least.
It's going to be a hard act to follow right there.
Yeah, well, let's just see, how many, I mean...
Well, we need cybersecurity, just like we need other securities.
Oh, yeah.
All right, mayor commissioners, thank you for letting me come up and present our budget for '22. Excuse me, yeah, '22. Edward, yours as well. This budget itself is about 200,000 more than last year. I'm going to hit it at a high level. I'm not going to go into major detail unless there's any information you guys are wanting on this from last year. I was kind of going line item by line item, which was kind of excruciating. So I'm going to kind of hit it at a high level, and if there's any questions on it, I will certainly entertain them and make sure you're understanding everything. So once again, we still have the same current employee staffing level. We're at seven, same as last year. We're making it do. Technically, the average in the industry is about one employee, full-time employee in the IT department per 55 city employees, or county employees for that matter. We are making do of it. We also maintain the radio system, which is a, it's not a full-time job by any means, but it is a specialized position that we've undertaken here in the last year and a half. Current employees, we're up from last year. We're up about 12 employees from the information I was given from the HR department. We're at 459 full-time, 45 part-time. Just a couple little, uh, quick facts in there of things we maintain. Cell phones, about 295 tablets, cell phones, iPads, IP-based phones, analog soft phones. We're sitting right around 291. Portables and mobile radios for all of public safety, as well as public services. We're sitting at about 485. Body cameras for the PD, they're sitting at 100. Dash cams in their vehicles, 12. Laptops throughout the city, 165. Site monitoring from, depending on where we're at, for security camera-wise, we have about 150 cameras that we maintain. Desktops, we've increased physical or virtual. We're kind of moving away from the virtual machines for specific users to get a better experience. Server-wise, we're kind of sitting at the same we were last year, about 49 virtual, 40 physical machines. Some of the accomplishments over this last year, we were able to replace our VDI servers and our, build all new machines for those end-users out there. And the VDI servers would actually house all of our computers for our end-users out there. So the virtual end-users are getting, uh, new desktops, so they got new desktops out of that upgrade. We completed the second public safety tower at the end of last year. It was a long effort that was started back in the end of 2016, when that was first commissioned and brought in. The tower wasn't sitting in any warehouse anywhere. It was just a deal that was closed and purchased. And once we finally had a site that was going to work, they brought the equipment in and got it erected. CAD machines and dispatch, they're good to go for another, at least four and a half, five years. We replaced 15 of their CAD machines in there for both police and fire dispatching systems they're using. We had to replace our firewall that was end-of-life. So we have a next-gen firewall in place, a very robust firewall, trying to protect us from all the evildoers. Antivirus, we've upgraded our, to a next-gen antivirus solution as well. Traditional antivirus is a signature-based solution, which goes out and kind of looks at the, depending on what you're using, what solution it is, it looks at the host and says, hey, here's a new signature for this virus, and you know, look for this when you come in. We're actually using a next-gen with actually what's, what's happening on the machine. So if it sees a machine starting to, you know, run a specific application in an elevated command prompt or running PowerShell, it actually can segregate that machine and shut it off and take it off the network. So it's a little more expensive than our previous solution we had, but I believe it's well worth the money for that. Laserfish implementation, which is our document management, that was completed for HR. They were in need of a solution because they were all paper. Everything they had was in paper up there, so they now have a solution to get everything into a digital management.
Are we going to, are we going to leverage Laserfish across other departments?
Yes, sir, we are. That's actually a second part of the implementation to get public services, as well as arrest and community development into it.
Because it has data tagging and all that sort of stuff. I mean, make it easy for, I would assume, our clerk to...
Correct, and they, they were the original users of it.
Oh, okay.
That's kind of where we went with it. We were trying to get it for the longest time, but it kind of kept getting pushed back to the wayside, and we were using a legacy and document management solution that we are now no longer paying maintenance on. So we're trying to get everything into Laserfish for a more seamless implementation on it.
So we still have the data in the one that we're not paying maintenance on?
That is correct.
And you're just going to try and convert that over to Laserfish?
That's going to be the next step, is to try to actually get it converted over to it.
Okay.
That's going to be a little bit of a cost, but I'm going to see if we can get that converted over. There's a lot of data in there that has a retention that would have already expired, or it's actually, there's no really retention to it. PDFs downloaded online, that's not really something that has to be, you know, secured or stored here. But there was a lot of stuff that was downloaded into that system, two terabyte worth of data, that, you know, most of it's really not of any retention value.
Is all this stuff in Laserfish readable? Like, what is it, OCR?
Yes.
Is it the same with the old database? Is there, like, when you, when you convert it over, are you going to make it all readable when it's in Laserfish?
Yes, that's the whole idea, is to make sure it's a usable document. I mean, risk management was using it heavily. So Christie up in the HR and the legal side was using it heavily, so there's a lot of important information still that has to come over.
Okay.
So we've got it backed up, images of it, so, I mean, I'm not worried about, per se, if something happening to it, but it is no longer under maintenance. And we've shut it off so that people can't actually put more data into it.
Gotcha.
But moving forward, we're going to have public services, as well as community development get into it. Finance is actually, they're using Power DMS to put some of their day-to-day activities, transactions into it, and I, I wasn't sure that I was really liking what they were doing with that, but I, it seems to be working for them at this time. So I may try to get them into Laserfish as well. Increased engagement. Kelly's worked really hard to increase our engagement across all of our social media platforms. Another big thing that's usually in the, the media sea is SCADA networks for our water treatment facilities. Of course, you know, we had a huge upgrade here a few years back for the $65 million expansion down at Public Services, and we kind of got called in at the very end of it saying we just needed two switches. At the very end is kind of what we were told, you just need two switches, and we got the rest of it. Well, it didn't quite work out like that. There was a lot of holes in the, uh, the technology side that, you know, we were never included on at the time, unfortunately. And now bringing it up, we're able to harden it. We've replaced the switches in there that were just consumer-based switches, and we've ensured that there is no public internet access to it to, you know, to do the best we can to keep people out of it. And if you're not sure what SCADA is, again, it's what controls the lift stations, the water plants, and there's a lot of damage you can do if you get in those systems. There's PLCs that you can control, and you either open a chlorine or shut stuff off, and there's a lot of, it's, it's a, it's a target that's sought after quite a bit by hackers. So we've tried to do the best to secure that as well, and it's very limited access to get to that system. Touching on some of the areas where we've seen increases. Again, I'm not going to touch on these line by line through the, the PDFs you have on the SharePoint there, but our, our major increases on this, again, is going to be Motorola for the P25 wireless maintenance. That's going up about four and a half percent. Our endpoint detection response, which I mentioned to you, that has a higher ticket than last year. I had 25 for last year, and I expect it to come in right at 37 for this. And firewall maintenance, because of the firewalls we've replaced, we've actually put VPNs up for all of our fire departments coming into us, as well as the WRF network. We all have next-gen firewalls at those locations, so that price will go up as well. Under 6,400, the PD, it's time for laptops again. So last year, we were able to replace just that 40 of them. We're going to try to get another 40, and again, which is 33% because they have about 120 laptops, so I'm going to try to keep that going for them. They're semi-ruggedized laptops, and I expect they'll, you know, get another, they should get five years out of those, and that's kind of where they're at in the deals they have. Fire department, currently, they use iPads for all of their calls for service when they're running around. The medics in the back of the ambulances use it as well, and they connect up to ESO for their reporting purposes. If they ever hit a spot where they lose cellular connectivity on those on those, while they have the app open doing their reports, the entire app shuts down and they lose all their data. So I'm looking to put laptops in the back of the vehicles for the medics, so that they're able to do their reports, either while they're on their way to the hospital, or transporting a patient to or fro. And an IT vehicle, so we've never really had a new vehicle. I've only been here 11 years on IT, but we've always had hand-me-downs, and they're fine for it, except for a lot of the equipment we have, we can no longer fit in the back of SUVs and sedans. So I'm looking to get a small van. And usually, the PD's pretty good at giving us some of their hand-me-downs. We've been driving one of their old K-9 vehicles, and it, it works, except for if we have to put our larger equipment in there. We have a portable public address system. You know, we'd had to take it out to Northwest Rec for the, you know, one of the functions the mayor did out there for the Rock Springs Ridge land deal. We have to use our personal vehicles to treat, or transport that equipment, just because it's too big for anything we have. So I'm looking to get that. If we don't get it, we'll continue to make do with what we have. Another portion here, it's got a Motorola tag to it, is their call logger system. It's their nice system, which records radio traffic for them. That is end-of-service. That's gonna go out the middle of next year. So that is a higher-priced ticket item in there. And that's, that's the majority of our increase for this fiscal year coming up. Wishlist capital improvements that we're looking at doing. We're currently working with the integrator at actually getting the council chambers updated and brought into the 20th century, because we're still far that behind. So I'll settle for that. I'm hoping it's not gonna cost that price there. I, I, it's probably closer to two, but there are some other items we'll have to do for power, upgrading the power in the building. So that's not gonna count anything from them. And we're looking to possibly change out the lights in here, as well as maybe the, the painting towards the back of the room as well. And that's something we'll work with facilities on. Camera data storage, we're running on an old legacy system that, it doesn't have maintenance on it. We kind of continue just to use it because it works for us, but I'm looking to get additional storage for our cameras. Dispatch, that's not a huge ticket item at the 17.5, but the KVMs to dis, or to transfer from one computer to the other, they run about six computers at each station, and they have to kind of jump quickly from a computer to computer. And there's just one keyboard and mouse there. So their KVM allows them to jump from machine to machine, just touching either control or, or whatever we have the hotkey set up to them, so they can move around. They have, unfortunately, those KVMs we have are, they're, they're very old and in need of replacement if we can. For our cybersecurity posture, I'm looking to do a network penetration testing this coming fiscal year. And this will kind of let us know where we are weak, or where we can improve as far as our outside visibility to the world.
Is this, is this one of the ones that's wishlist but in budget, or is this out of budget?
I have this in the wishlist. I'm kind of hoping it comes through. I don't believe I've.
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, if we don't do this level of penetration testing, is penetration testing across our systems that we outs, or get from vendors, is that part of their contractual obligation to us to do some level of that? Because the reason why I ask is, you know, in the news lately, there's a lot of ransomwares, and they're attacking municipalities. You have people hacking into wastewater treatment facilities, things like that. So I would think that this is pretty critical.
All right. So as far as to answer your question, yes, for our financial audits we go through, everyone we go through annually here, there's a cybersecurity audit we go through, and that's one of the questions, you know, when's the last time you had a penetration testing, you know, what were the outcome, what were the findings of it? And we, we need to have it done. You know, I say I feel we are somewhat secure, but, you know, look at the federal agencies, the DoD that's been breached. I mean, you know, the city of Apopka, we, we do the best that we can with what we have. If somebody truly wanted to get into us, that, you know, that was, you know, had a real axe to grind, I'm sure there's somehow a way to get in. And usually, it's gonna be through a phishing attack, or some other type of fooling an employee, or something to give them information that they shouldn't.
Right. But I mean, i- it's one thing, we would have a bunch of egg on our face if, it's one thing if the, the people that wanted to do harm to us just came through an unlocked front door, versus the criminals drilled out the doorknob and got a now, you know, more sophisticated way of breaking into your house.
Correct. And that's again, the, the biggest issue, and again, it's not that they don't try to hack the systems. Social engineering is a much easier way to get into somebody. You know, impersonating somebody, you'll see it, and we'll get to that here shortly. I'm gonna kind of touch on that. But our biggest threat is probably our personnel internally here, of letting something come in. Or, you know, again, we've had people sign up, here's your PDF, you know, click here, or sign in for it, and you'll log in, and you can use your Yahoo account, your Google, or your Office 365. And there, there's no service we would ever use that would allow you to log in with your Yahoo account for it. And we've had a few people fool, or, you know, kind of fall into that portion of it. And we were able to catch it just prior to it. And actually, I think some of you actually got emails a while back. It was a couple, a couple of years back, but you actually got emails about it, just saying, you know, here's your, here's your invoice, or something to the effect of that. But we were able to stop that. There was about a $20,000 loss getting ready to occur at that point of somebody basically setting up a wire transfer. So that was all user, user unawareness to what was going on at the time. Where are we at? Additional flash storage. So we use a, we've got, again, an older hybrid solution. It's an XIO branded storage. And that is gonna be, I have a budget in there for one last year that is under support, and after that, they're going out. So I'm looking to add, because that storage will no longer be there. I'm looking to add additional storage to our flash array, so that we can keep our enterprise data running on that. And again, that would be our Laserfish. Any, any larger volumes that we would usually have out there, a lot of data. I try not to put any camera storage on our flash storage, just because it's, it's not meant for that. It's, you know, we'll keep that on spinning disk. It's a little more cost, cost efficient, I guess, for that part of it. Harmon Tower replacement, we're looking at about two and three-quarter million to do that. It is almost a greenfield at that point, because we'd have to put a new building up with it as well. Generator, all the tests and everything that'll go with it. Another part of that is gonna be for the, for the North Tower site. There was one piece that wasn't purchased back in the time. Those are called comparators. And those devices, we have them at our prime site, which is our Harmon site. They give the officers, firefighters, who's ever using the radio, they give them the best transmission of whatever tower they're near. So they're gonna have the best quality reception from either our North Tower or the South Tower out here. We don't have comparators at the North site. I don't know why they weren't purchased back when the tower was done, but it's about a $368,000 lift to get that to it as a fully redundant site, meaning the Harmon Tower could fall down altogether, go offline, and would stay up and active. Currently, we can lose antennas out at the Harmon Tower and still function. But if we lose comparators, that's where we're in trouble. So that's part of that. I'm looking to get that a fully redundant site as well. And again, I'm not sure at the time why that wasn't put in, but I'm sure there's a reason, but I don't know what that is. A couple of statistics in here for you. Facebook, as of a couple days back, there's 1,700, or 17,931 followers. Fire has 4,159. Police is sitting at 37,19. Our YouTube subscribers varies, but we're about 462. Little over 24,500 views, 5,000 hours watched. Instagram followers, just over 3,000. Twitter followers, 341. Back in April, we launched Commissioner's Seat Facebook sites to own the seats for, to assist in archiving purposes, so that that wasn't burdened onto you. Nextdoor was brought in as well. Kelly added that to the, her tool belt there for social media, getting out communications to all the different communities that are on it. Some of the increases you'll see going across, three and a half Facebook, Instagram, 14 and a half, and Twitter, 25%. She's continuing to work on that to get those numbers higher, to continue the engagement with our constituents. Some of the goals coming up here is to continue to effectively manage any of the citywide technology services we provide. We're kind of behind the scenes. Only, you know, you see us whenever you need us. Unfortunately, you don't, you don't want to see us. I don't want to see you, actually, because that means there's something wrong. I don't mean that in a personal sense, but we're behind the scenes, and we try to ensure everything's running, to keep everybody up and going. We're able to continue our 99.999 uptime, which, if you kind of calculate that out, we're doing less than eight minutes downtime on services that we provide for the city, that we have control over. We're gonna continue with our high-quality customer care. We are redesigning the website. This week, we're giving our first new images and color branding for it, and that's something that I'd like to get with each of you commissioners, to kind of go over what we're looking at as far as colors, and ensure that you're happy with the way we're going with it. We'll also be implementing apopka.gov to take over the apopka.net domain itself. That'll be an external domain for increased security for the individuals, because of visitors coming to that site. Only municipalities, city, county government agencies can have a .gov website. So we, we have it already approved, apopka.gov, and that will be switched over as well when we go live with the new website. And again, increased cybersecurity with our users. We, we have programs in place for it, that we send out training. I try to do it quarterly. We do phishing quite a bit, sending out phishing emails. And sometimes I try to make them obvious, just to give them a bone. And then sometimes we'll, we'll do either a spoofing, domain spoofing, or I'll send something out, look like it's from, looking to be from the mayor, but it's truly not. If you actually look at it, there's, you know, telltale signs that it's doing some sort of spoofing. Another portion of it is to implement the AV technology in here, which we kind of mentioned for it, for greater outreach as well. With COVID, of course, you know, everybody was able to say that, hey, we don't necessarily have to be here in person to do this. We're still able to get the same information and, you know, a public comment, if that's something we want to implement down the road, that's something we can also bring in with the new solution. If that's not, if they're not in the room here. But that's a decision we'll make here and go forward with it. So as far as email coming in, that's one of our biggest threats that we'll see, as far as our end-users coming in. We had about 2.347 million come in since October 1st to our primary domain. And then there's another one down below, and you'll see the onmicrosoft.com. That's, that's a internal use only, for as far as email addresses. That's something you, you would each see out there. Of those 2.348 million, we have just under a quarter million that get rejected by the firewall we have and the spam filters for it. Most of those are on RBO, which is a real-time black hole list, and those are just known bad IP addresses on servers that are sending spam mail to us. So most of those get knocked out with that. You'll see some of the other manual header rejections. It's not formatted properly. One of the key ones is fiber signature detection. You'll see 389 on that one. That's our sandboxing feature on our email archive we have that actually looks at the attachments for it and says, hey, there's something wrong with this. We're gonna hold this back and not allow you to have it because there's something suspicious, or it's got a, you know, it's got a known signature in it that is, you know, known to be a malware. Anti-spoofing header lockout, Commissioner Banksen fell in that category a couple of weeks back, where he wasn't getting emails to himself. I think he was sending personal emails. And because.
Transferring information over.
Doug Banksen, and dougbanksen@apopka.net. It kind of said, hey, wait a minute, something's not right here. There's a different email domain coming in for it. So it was holding his address, and we're able to get it straightened out, forward and whitelisted. But that's kind of where that comes in for it. We get plenty of attempts from people acting like the mayor, you know, mayor at, Apopka mayor at some crazy domain, and it'll target somebody, hey, I need to change my direct deposit withholding. Can you please send me the new form? And, you know, if you're not sure what's going on here, you just see mayor, and people sometimes panic because they see that name. And I've unfortunately had a few folks in HR send out, send this person new, new forms to change the direct deposit. You know, luckily, we're able to see it come through, and we're like, whoa, this is, this isn't right. Let's see. So some of the task duties we have here. I'm gonna wrap up this presentation with it. As you can see from your, on your iPad as well, some of these are gonna be smaller to see up here. Throughout the three areas we support for customer support, network management, project support, we do anything and everything across it. If it has internet, camera, you name it, we do it. We do anything, usually that's neither an IT-related sometimes. The police and fire are our biggest users out there for the technology they're using, and they, they do keep us busy. And of course, these are 12 departments we actually maintain or provide services to. So I will be happy to take any questions on our budget requests, if there's anything specific or any questions you have at all.
Okay. Any questions? Rob?
Just as a general rule of thumb, the approach, we, because obviously, we, we deal with a lot of different software providers, partners, things like that. And some providers, like Motorola, there's not just the software aspect, but hardware. So we're kind of pretty entrenched in those relationships. But like other software applications, like maybe our financial systems, or whatever else might be, we're not, do we take the mindset of auto-renewal in the contracts that we have with them? Or are we taking those out to RFP to make sure that we can always be competitive with pricing?
So the renewals for our financial software through admins, that's an annual. There's no RFP on that one. That is a sole source. So if we were gonna try to do something else, we're trying to put out for RFP, we'd be looking at a whole new system. So there's not, it's, it's, it's kind of like you're saying on the Motorola aspect of it, this is a defined software vendor. Nobody else can provide that. So it's just a, you know, year-to-year basis, you're renewing again.
But if you've got a lot of competitors in the space that provide very similar applications, and it's very easy to convert data over to another system.
It is.
It would be our, yeah.
We are in that system we have now. It kind of, I don't want to call it a knee-jerk reaction. It came up under the previous administration. There's some folks who had used it, and I guess liked it better over the IMS application we had. And it was a little more modern, per se, and there was more than one person that provided support for it, because at IMS, we had a person that provided support. And we were concerned if, you know, something tragic would happen to this guy, you know, we could be in trouble. So admin stepped into it, and it was kind of a lateral move. We lost some functionality. The water consumption graphs, we lost that. Our bill-paying portion of it kind of went away and got a little messy. The online building permit portal got messy as well. I'm sure you've seen that.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to use that like as a real example. I'm just throwing out like it's.
No, no.
But I'm just saying, conceptually, I, I guess it's, we're, we're not of the mindset, we're just gonna let it ride, right? We always are in contract review, make sure that we have the best deal out based off of what solutions are available.
For enterprise agreement, for like our Microsoft enterprise agreement, I shop that one. It's a three-year agreement, but I do shop it, trying to make sure we're getting it. And unfortunately, there are some, through DMS, Department Management Services, certain people hold the contracts for certain, like, I'll say Microsoft or whatever. SHI is the contract holder for that. They're gonna give us the best deal that we would get through other vendors. But I'm always looking for cheaper. I mean, any hardware we're buying, you know, let alone software solutions. But we're always comparing, you know, making sure we are getting the best bang for the buck. We're always below our budget at the end of the year. I'm never having to go ask for more money on anything. I try to, you know, we work within the means we have. And the crew I have in there is a very talented and very competent crew, and I couldn't ask for a better department.
Thanks.
Mr. Smith?
Good.
Mr. Price?
Definitely the unsung heroes, kind of like the sound man at church. Nobody, nobody knows unless something goes wrong, but thank you. I know it's a huge job.
Mr. Floskis?
Well, Robin knows me. I have no clue. I just go with the iPad and say, help me out. How do I get there? So I have a lot of trust in our IT department. Absolutely, 110%.
All right. Well, we'll see you tomorrow at 5:00.